Buddy to the September 9, 2020 Planning Commission Meeting. I've been asked to read a statement relative to the Open and Public Meetings Act. This is going to take a while, so please bear with me. In accordance with Utah Code 52420074, I have determined that conducting public meetings of the Provo City Planning Commission with an anchor location such as the Community Development Conference Room presents a substantial risk to the health, safety, to me, health and safety of those who may be present there. These are the facts upon which I have made this determination. Utah has been in declared state of emergency due to Novil coronavirus disease 2019 since March 6, 2020. A disease outbreak which the World Health Organization has characterized as a pandemic. The Centers for Disease Control and Prevention state that COVID-19 is easily spread from person to person between people who are in close contact with one another. The spread is through respiratory droplets when an infected person coughs, sneezes, or talks, and it may be spread by people who are non symptomatic. Federal, state, and local authorities have recommended that individuals limit public gatherings, wear face masks, and follow social distancing guidelines, that individuals exposed to persons experiencing symptoms of COVID-19 self quarantine for 14 days, and that individuals experiencing the symptoms, excuse me, experiencing symptoms of COVID-19 self isolate to prevent and control the continuing spread of COVID-19. Notwithstanding that Utah generally and Utah County specifically have been moved to the low risk phase reported, excuse me, the low risk phase reported COVID-19 cases in Utah County have more than doubled since May 31, 2020. Physical distancing measures will be difficult to set up and maintain in the Community Development Conference Room. Therefore, for the next 30 days, all meetings of the Provo City Planning Commission will be conducted entirely via electronic means. Meetings are broadcast live and available later on demand at youtube.com/user/provochannel17. Agendas and support materials are available at provo.org/PlanningCommission. To make a public comment or to join a meeting via telephone, follow the instructions provided on public notices of each meeting. To send comments to the Provo City Planning Commission members or weigh in on current issues, email them at dspublichearings@provo.org. Okay, we're through that. Got a fairly full agenda tonight, so we're going to move on fairly quick. To go ahead and start, we will take a roll of our commissioners that are with us tonight to start with. We will ask Commissioner Deborah Jensen to state her name and whether she has any conflicts.
Thank you. Deborah Jensen, no conflicts.
Commissioner Urquaga?
Your mute is on.
Laurie Urquaga, no conflicts.
Commissioner Jones?
Ally Jones, no conflicts.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Daniel Gonzalez, no conflicts.
Commissioner Lisa Jensen?
Lisa Jensen, no conflicts.
Commissioner Henry?
Brian Henry, no conflicts.
Commissioner Knutson?
Robert Knutson, no conflicts.
Thank you, and I am Dave Anderson, no conflicts. The items that we have tonight involve both administrative and legislative acts. The items that are start on the agenda are legislative, and those will require council action. That being said, the first item on the agenda tonight is a proposed project plan approval for a warehouse located at 564 West, 600 South in the heavy commercial zone, the Franklin neighborhood. KKL Architects is the applicant, and we will turn the time over to Dustin Wright to present this item.
Thank you. So the property that the applicant is proposing to develop is located just north of 6th South and between 6th West and 500 West. The property is a vacant lot currently, and the applicant is looking to develop a 3,200 square foot warehouse for a stucco operation. The zoning on the property is heavy commercial, RCM zone, and I wanted to note that it is adjacent to residential zones. It's got the residential conservation zone and the single family R16 zone adjacent to two sides of the property. So here's a site plan of how they propose to develop this site. The warehouse, some landscaping and parking are shown here. So within the zone that they're in, they... You guys hear me all right?
I believe so.
All right, so I'll just kind of go over their site plan a little bit here. They've got their parking, the code requires, based off their square footage, that they have at least six parking stalls. They're proposing five stalls on the site, or sorry, seven stalls. So one additional then minimum required. Since they're adjacent to those residential zones, they're required to have some additional landscaping buffer between those, so along those property lines on the west and the north, they've provided that required 10-foot landscaped buffer where they, where they'll plant trees and shrubs and have a, you know, a 10-foot space between those to meet the code requirement. They've also placed the trash enclosure on the opposite, opposite side of the residential zone. Be able to see the mouse there. And so they've placed it over here, so the property on the east side is in the same commercial, heavy commercial zone as them, so. They've met those requirements, they comply with the building height, they're just doing a one-story warehouse. They're also required to put a six-foot decorative masonry wall along the property lines about the residential properties. So they're proposing that along the west and north property lines adjacent to the residential. Our Coordinators Review Committee has reviewed that application and approved it, and its recommendation is for approval of the proposed project plan. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Commissioners, any questions for Daniel? Brian?
Just a quick question, on this site plan here, it's hard to tell where is the entrance, and is there a specific entrance, or is the whole front open to the street? Just kind of that general area, can you explain that a little better?
Yeah, so the entrance is along 600 South. So they'd have a drive access just on the front of the property leading back to the rest of the property there.
And it would just be all asphalt, basically, other than that planting strip around the outer edge?
Correct, yeah, in the heavy commercial zone, there's not a landscape requirement. It's just that they're adjacent to the residential zone, which then triggers a landscape buffer along that, those property lines. But typically in that zone, you wouldn't have a landscape requirement.
Even along 600 South, there's no landscaping requirements along the street?
So there, yeah, along the street, you're going to have your your front yard setback, so I apologize, yeah, in the front, there would be a a setback area there that they would do, so 600 South. Let me see if I can show you a better picture. It's a really narrow street there. There's not currently a plan to widen 600 South. So their property line actually doesn't start till much further back. This area that you see here in the picture is actually not on there.
Okay, that clarifies things, thank you.
Welcome.
I'm going to just follow up on that, just relative to the, the street and the condition of the street. So, for example, like curb, gutter, sidewalk. Long-term, there's not a plan for those types of improvements to be on the street.
Yeah, from my understanding with Public Works, talked with David Day, and that sounds like there's not a current plan. David Day would like to add anything to that, I think he's, he's on this meeting as well.
Yeah, so this area, we haven't planned for curb, gutter, and sidewalk. And so what we would do in this situation is have them sign an improvement agreement that would state that at such time as that was deemed necessary to put that in, that they would be willing and responsible for the cost of putting that in.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Urquaga?
Yes, Dustin, I'm wondering if there is any concern that we would have based on the content of, or the intended content of this kind of a building, are those restrictions anything that comes before the planning commission?
Are you referring to the use, or?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so the proposed use that they're requesting is for a stucco business, and that's a permitted use within the heavy commercial zone. So staff doesn't foresee an issue there, it's a permitted use within the zone, and so related activity to that use would be permitted.
Okay, so as far as chemicals or other things go, those are not anticipated to be a problem?
Yeah, we haven't, so it gets reviewed, like I mentioned, the Coordinators Review Committee, the fire marshal is on the the committee there and didn't raise an issue with that.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Henry?
Another clarification, so this would be more like a stucco storage facility, not a stucco manufacturing plant?
That's my understanding, but you could also ask the applicant more of what their business entails.
Sure, thank you.
Any other questions of Mr. Wright from the commission? I'm going to go ahead and just ask a couple of other things. And I'm not meaning to be redundant, but it sounds like this is a permitted use and that the proposed site plan meets all of the city's requirements. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And then just outdoor storage, maybe that's the only other thing that, that I wonder about. Do they have any plans for that that you know of? I didn't see anything on the site plan that looked like that.
Site plan didn't show any, and I, my understanding on the zone is that outdoor storage isn't permitted use. So it would have to be all contained within the warehouse that they're building.
Thank you. Does the applicant have anything that they would like to add?
I'm Ken Lamborn, the architect. And my understanding, the use, they have a lot of scaffolding as a company, and they want to store it where it can be covered and protected, not not subject to theft or rust and all the things of the elements. They also have a high lift, forklift, equipment that they will put in there, but they don't do any manufacturing, there's no chemicals. I suppose there could possibly be buckets of stucco that they purchased ready to use on a job from time to time, but they don't warehouse or stock things, all their work is basically custom work. So that, that points to the use of the building itself. The owner has agreed already in concept, I guess the city will prepare a form for the planning and, and right away improvements out front. So he has no problem doing that when it gets done, but it's pointless to do it at this time. If we put in curb and gutter, the water would have nowhere to go. And was there one other question that needed to be answered? I forget, oh. He was planning on putting in gravel or road base or something, except for the areas shown to be paved, rather than paving the whole site. And we're using some of that as sump areas, so we'll have impervious, you know, pervious ground that will help collect water as well as have the pipe to those sumps. But I think that's all I had to add.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lamborn. Commissioners, any questions of the applicant? Mr. Gonzalez?
Yeah, the staff report noted that there was some concerns with that the site is narrow and will not handle large trucks well. I think it was the neighborhood chair stated that, and I'm wondering what, what type of trucks does the applicant use?
Well, depending on the job, they primarily just use their pickups. They might have one larger truck, I have not seen that, but I asking specifically if he expected large truck traffic, and he said absolutely not. So it might be a stake-type truck, but most everything is done with their pickups or a trailer.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Urquaga?
Yes, I just kind of was tangentially to that wondering about a neighborhood meeting, and this actually might be for Mr. Wright to answer, but just kind of curious as to whether the neighbors did meet about this and what the response was.
I haven't heard about a neighborhood meeting, I think this time with the Corona, I'm not sure if they're meeting or not, but I did speak with the neighborhood chair, and she did communicate some of those concerns that put the staff report.
Yeah, I, I actually communicated with the chair as well, and my understanding, due to Corona, of course, but she was doing a phone poll, and that she would get back to me if there were any concerns, but all I got is that it seems fine to move forward, so I don't know any more detail than that.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions for the applicant? Okay, we will go ahead and open up the public hearing, we'll start with anyone that is with us representing the neighborhood. Don't see anybody jumping in there, is there anyone at all that would like to comment on this item? I mentioned also that we'd ask people to keep their comments to three minutes if possible.
There are currently no public comments, given a minute.
We'll just sit tight until you tell us to do otherwise. Are we comfortable now?
Okay, no public comments.
Okay, I didn't mean to jump the gun, just want to make sure you weren't waiting on me. I, so thank you, we will close the public hearing and turn the matter over to the commission for discussion. Does anybody have any, any additional questions they want to ask of staff, the applicant? Commissioner Lisa Jensen?
I don't have a question, I just, I guess for our own discussion. I feel like this is a classic example of zoning ordinances that are doing their job. We've got, we've got protection in place for a buffer, and this seems like a really good use in that zone for a transition between the residential area and something bigger and more intrusive. I like the landscaping, I like the setbacks, they're not asking for any exceptions, they're willing to comply with what the zoning allows, and honestly, what better use could we see than, than something like this next to the railroad tracks between residences? So my only concern is that uses can change, and so we have to really trust what the zone allows for land uses, because if the stucco warehouse moves out, some other warehouse that might want to store chemicals and other things can move in. So to me, that's the only concern with this, because right now it seems very, very compatible.
Thank you, I'm going to go ahead and just piggyback on your comments, Commissioner Jensen. I agree completely, I, I like the requirement for the landscaping adjacent to the residential use, the masonry wall, different things like that. I'd go as far as to say that, in my view, this is the type of project that we don't necessarily need to be involved in reviewing. It's an allowed use that meets all of the city's criteria for the use from a site design perspective. I actually don't believe that there would be any basis for us as a commission to deny the proposal. And with that, I'd love to see us perhaps review the typical procedures that are followed relative to the involvement of the commission on things like this, where potentially they're just administrative and staff can handle them. I think that's probably more, more appropriate than having it on our agenda like we did tonight. Yeah, some of that's just obviously my opinion, but I certainly agree about this project and it being a good fit.
If I could, the building department, if there were ever a change of use, the building department would have full rights to analyze that and make sure that it complies with everything, not only with building codes, but also with zoning ordinance and planning ordinances. So you'll have that opportunity, also the licensing for a business license, they have the opportunity to review things, so if somebody was going to bring in a business that was non-compliant, it would be up to them to deal with and satisfy you folks, rather than just have it be automatic.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions, discussion from commissioners? If not, we, there we go, Mr. Henry?
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion.
Please.
My first motion, I'm so excited. I make a motion that we approve item one, KKL Architects' project plan approval for a warehouse located at 564 West, 600 South, in the heavy commercial zone.
Thank you, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I will second.
Was that Commissioner Urquaga?
It was.
Okay, great, we have a motion and a second, as stated by Commissioner Henry to approve item one, any discussion on the motion?
No.
I don't see any, let me ask for some help from staff, any need to do a roll call on this, or? Can we go?
I don't think so.
Okay, I'm just going to go ahead then and ask for all in favor.
Aye.
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 And any opposed? Hearing nobody vote in opposition to the motion to approve, we will say that's unanimous.
Did you vote, Commissioner Anderson?
You know, I, I, in the affirmative.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to item number two. This is a proposal made by the Development Services Department. It's proposed text amendment to section fourteen two, three, one, sixty, three, to clarify amenity space requirements for developments with twenty or more residential units in the interim transit oriented development zone. Once again, Mr. Wright.
Thank you. So staff was reviewing our code and came across something we wanted to add some clarification to in our ITOD zone regarding landscaping, open space, recreation section here. And so, as you can see, the existing code calls for open and recreation space equivalent to twenty percent of the lot area. And staff has had some issues kind of defining what that is. Would it try to include setback or landscaping, things like that? And so our other codes that are similar to this that we have in our downtown districts or downtown zones, for example, have a good code as as far as amenity space goes. And so we took a look at that and felt like it would be appropriate to amend this code in the ITOD zone to reflect more of what we have there. And so as you can see in the proposed code, what we're looking to add there is to change it so that it's applicable to residential units and not just the site as a whole. The amenity space is serving residential units. It's not necessarily serving a a commercial space or something as much. And so the requirement would be for developments that are proposed to have twenty more residential units, that they would provide ten percent of the residential gross floor area as an amenity space. The other thing our current code doesn't do is it doesn't really define what that space is. The proposed one would say what this recreation or amenity space is, what it can be such as a clubhouse, a gym, a pool, things of that nature. So we define it there so that it's not just a developer that wants to come in and and count a long strip down the side of the property is as an amenity space. It's not really usable. The people aren't going to be able to gather and and recreate things of that nature. So this helps clarify that and add some some guidance as we review these developments. And so, section A that we're proposing to add is again stating that the landscaping wouldn't be contributing to that ten percent. It's it's something that has to be part of part of the site, you know, a clubhouse or rooftop garden, things like that. Paragraph B says that fifty percent of the required recreational amenity space may be located outdoors, the ground floor level. We've seen in the downtown, a lot of projects will use the rooftop or other floors within the building as well. And so that's a good option to for smaller lots to build a meet this requirement. And then the last one in C, it says amenity space must be massed or accumulated to be functional as recreational amenity or gathering space. That's kind of what I talked about. So staff feels that adding this this new text and clarification will will help help some of the goals we have in our general plan of establishing open space requirements within developments and helping us be able to enforce those and and make sure that they're providing usable space within these. So staff's recommendation is for approval or recommending approval for the municipal council to adopt this proposed change. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer those now.
Thank you. Commissioner Jensen. Deborah Jensen, please.
I just wonder if Mr. Wright could explain or discuss a little bit more on findings of fact on page two. It says the proposed text will limit amenity space outdoors at ground level to fifty percent of the required recreational amenity space. I'm just curious why you're limiting ground level to no more than fifty percent.
So that's the same requirement we have in our other downtown zones that have this amenity space requirement. I think one of the bigger reasons, I guess, would be that you know, it will help possibly provide more interior space to be used, because in Utah we have, you know, the colder months as well. So providing an indoor gym could be a good option for tenants instead of having it all be outside. And also another reason I think is that it's where the ITOD zone is a is a zone that's kind of urban development. And so you know, helping to kind of limit the increase the footprint of the development. Then to build up instead of out, I think that's a portion of probably why that's that fifty percent requirements there is to let people have better use of the the site itself and have a bigger building footprint.
All right, I guess that answers my question. But I would be thinking that land values would drive the intensity of development. It just, it struck me as a little bit of an odd regulation to limit how much of the ground surface can be the recreational facility. Anyway, that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Commissioner Lisa Jensen.
So I like the goal and the clarifying intent of this. But that there were just a few things that didn't actually feel like clarifying language to me, so I wanted to just point those out. It's in the findings of fact, number four, but it's also in the verbiage of the document itself. It's the point C. The proposed text will require that amenity space is masked or accumulated to be functional as recreational amenity or gathering space. So I think I know what that means, but it's is there a clearer way of expressing that so that any old Joe can understand what that means?
Yeah, if you have some suggestions, I'd be happy to hear what those are. I think, like.
To me, perhaps another sentence that would say what we don't want by clarity, add clarity. Ms. Jensen, what we were trying to get at when we wrote that is that what tends to happen is that developer will lay out the site and whatever can't be used for building footprint or parking, they call that amenity space. And a lot of times they're pretty unusable remnants. And the purpose of that language was to tell a developer, no, you can't use unusable remnants and call that open space. It needs to be masked in a way that's functional and usable. So that's what we were trying to get at. If another sentence describing what we don't want would be helpful, we could certainly add another sentence.
Yeah, because, you know, I don't understand that there's these terms for unusable area. So just reading that, I was, I just couldn't figure out what what they were trying to say. So that's helpful.
Thank you. Commissioner Gonzalez.
Yeah, I was wondering, is there any, are there any slides depicting which areas in Provo currently have that ITOD zoning? And and a second, I had a second question, but I forgot.
We can pull up a zoning map that'll show you where the ITOD zone is. We'll do that now.
If maybe I can just add that relative to the zone, the interim. Please help me understand what that means.
When they first wrote the zone twelve to fifteen years ago, it was meant to be temporary, that a new TOD zone was going to come in and replace it. That's just never occurred. So it's still been referred to as the interim TOD. I believe Gary McGinn's group is working on a new TOD zone right now.
Will that zone by chance address what we're talking about tonight or things similar to this?
Yes.
Just as a comment, some other ways to possibly expand the definition could include like a a barbecue patio or a pergola. A covered patio, something that captures a little bit more types of recreational amenity use.
Can you see the map on the screen now?
Yeah.
That purple zone right in the middle is the ITOD. That's the money you show them what some of the major roads are through running through that so they can orient themselves.
So this is University Avenue. This is the front runner station right here.
I got you.
Six hundred south.
All right, great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Back to Commissioner Deborah Jensen.
Thank you. I was just going to make one comment that I've seen other municipalities use to instead of calling it amenity space, they'll often have a requirement for open space, which includes landscaping, but they'll define this kind of space as usable open space. So and then they define that in their definitions. So that allows for a little I don't know if that's brings any more definition to what least Ms. Lisa Jensen was saying, but I've seen that phrase used usable open space as opposed to just open space. If that's of any help.
Yeah, I think that's helpful. That that speaks to the point we're trying to make, and we wanted to differentiate between amenity space and required landscaping. Required landscaping is usually what's in the setbacks. And again, every week we have developers who want us to count required landscaping within setbacks as part of their amenity space. And we don't care to do that. Amenity space needs to be functional as an amenity. So it goes to the same point you're making, Ms. Jensen, and we can look at a better clarifying language if you'd like.
And also, a lot of the ITOD zone or the ITOD zone is mostly a zero lot line. So there typically aren't setbacks. There's they can do setbacks, but they're not required to. So having an amenity space, they could provide an interior gym or something like that where I don't know if usable open space meets that as well, but I think that's a good.
Amenity space can also be on the roof.
Yeah.
If I understand things correctly, the amenity space can be indoors as well.
Right, yes.
That was going to be my point, that it could be one hundred percent inside.
But we have found typically as developers do a combination, they'll do some indoor amenity space and then they'll do some rooftop space. And between the combination of those, they get to the percentage they need.
Okay, and I was, the other thing that I was going to comment was for the language, instead of mass, you might use grouped or collected. So that mass just is sort of a sciency term that not everybody would respond to the same way.
Good suggestion. We'll make that change.
Yeah, I really appreciate the point being raised about just clarifying what amenity space means. I kind of glossed over that. I like the idea of saying what it isn't, like you suggested, Mr. Pepperoni. I also think there might be room for just some type of a minimum square footage requirement or something like that for an area to qualify. I don't know what that number might be. But I'll throw that out just as a thought.
Dave, it does say twenty units, so maybe that would take care of that.
And I'm thinking, thank you, I'm thinking more along the lines of for space to qualify as amenity space. Now, that particular space might need to be, let's say, four hundred square feet, so twenty by twenty. Or, you know, some kind of configuration like that. Personally, I think with the kind of densities that we're talking about, part of the benefit for residents is to provide maybe some amount of unobstructed space, you know, that's consolidated in one area. And I don't know, like I said, what that that number necessarily would be, but I'll just throw that out as a thought. And one other question for staff. What would the requirement be for projects that have fewer than twenty units? Is there is there anything there?
There isn't. And the reason we did that is that once you get to those lower numbers, it becomes very difficult for that number of homeowners to maintain it, to pay for maintenance of it. So that was the reason why we had twenty as the trigger. But we're open to any discussion or suggestions the planning commission would have on that issue.
Well, maybe I'll I'll just say this, and if if potentially staff's working on kind of a rewrite of the zone anyway, then I'd be hesitant to make this a bigger deal than it needs to be. But, you know, thinking about properties that might be a half of an acre in size and therefore be, you know, maybe sixteen, eighteen units or something like that, I don't know necessarily that the need totally goes away for those residents to have access to some space. You know, whether it's just a patio with a barbecue grill or something like that. So that is something ideally, I think, would be addressed with the standard, just some minimum provision that that comes into play regardless of the size of the project. But then also something that might be scalable. A project with two hundred units. I think even from a percentage perspective, probably would have a very different need than a project with with twenty. And I realize you can make this a lot harder and more complex than it needs to be when you really get into those issues, but those are just a couple of thoughts that I have, I guess, about what's proposed tonight. And that being said, any other? Commissioner Gonzalez.
Yeah, I remember my questions now. I was wondering, was there any past project or upcoming project that that triggered or sparked this staff to propose this text amendment? And the second question would be so this text amendment applies for residential development. How would a commercial or other use mean this? What type of requirements would be for a different kind of use?
Yeah, so we receive calls from people looking to develop in the zone. And so they they asked about that specific our current text in there. What does open space mean? Can we can we count a balcony? Can we count the you know, the strip down the whole side of the property that they have to put into to since they're adjacent to a residential zone and and so as we got talking about it, you know, those those clarifications, I think, were needed. And so that's kind of what has brought this brought this forward. And I've gone over this with them, and they seem like this will actually help help them build and make their project work as opposed to you know, twenty percent of the whole site, trying to figure out how to mass or or collect that much land into the useful space, so. And then what was your second part of your question?
Yeah, for this amendment addresses residential developments and how would other types of uses? Would there be requirements for other types of uses?
Yeah, so the ITOD zone requires that residential is part of a development. I don't know the exact percentage there, but so there's usually going to be a residential component with any mixed use development. And then kind of like I said earlier, a commercial site, you know, providing an amenity space like that isn't really what we're looking to do. I think it's focused on providing an amenity space for a residential tenant of a unit in this urban area.
Mr. Gonzalez, when this zone was written, it was written so that commercial uses were really ancillary to the residential. For example, there's a limitation in the zone that commercial uses can't be over 2,500 square feet, or they have to go through a conditional use application to the planning commission. So at the time they wrote the zone, there was a clear intention that commercial uses be ancillary.
Mr. Gonzalez, thank you for the clarification.
Commissioner Henry?
Couple suggestions. First on item B, where it says only 50%. Every time I see that, I think 50% is required. Could that say up to 50% instead of only?
Or a maximum of 50%?
Or a maximum of, just so it doesn't sound like they have to have 50% outside and 50% somewhere else, but just something like up to instead of only.
Yeah, I think that's a good suggestion.
And then my other thought, item A and C, to me, seem to be addressing the same issue. And as I look at it, I'm curious if A, for instance, just thinking out loud, if they were to put in, for instance, a basketball court, and it went right to the edge of the setback, could they not count the 10-foot or anything like that? Like, would that limit them on their ability to develop something that is a quality recreational space? But because it's in a required setback, it couldn't be counted?
Typically, we're negotiable on those types of things. If it seems reasonable, and it seems functional, it seems to meet the intent of what we're trying to achieve, we tend to be flexible on those types of things.
Okay. Okay, because my, my thought on number C, just a suggested rewrite, is something like to qualify as amenity space, area must be designed to be functional as a recreational amenity or gathering space.
Thank you, Commissioner. Sorry. Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yeah, Lori mentioned some alternative language in, in 3C, like grouped, and other options might be contiguous, suggesting that's next to or together in sequence.
I like that suggestion better than mine.
Any other questions of staff? I don't see anybody. So we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anyone with us tonight that would like to speak to item number two?
There are currently no public comments. We'll give it a minute.
Okay.
No public comments.
Okay, we will close the public hearing and turn the discussion back to the commission. We've talked about potentially having a number of modifications made to the language that is before us tonight. At the same time, I haven't really heard anybody object to the concept, or what staff's working to accomplish with this. In my mind, one of the questions for us to, to answer is whether or not this is potentially ready for a motion to recommend approval with modifications, or if we would like staff perhaps to, to make some changes and bring it back for further review among the commission, understanding that we've held the public hearing and that requirement is satisfied. Any thoughts about that or anything else relative to the proposal?
Because this is pending legislation, this gives us six months to work through this. So this isn't really time-sensitive. We don't need to hurry it along. So if the planning commission would like us to bring it back with some changes, we will. I don't think we will try to address everything the planning commission has raised, because I think some of them are larger issues that ought to be addressed by Gary McGinn's group. But we're happy to bring back to you revised language if you would like.
Thank you. Commissioner Urquidyaga? I think you're muted, Lori.
I just clicked on unmute, but sometimes this doesn't do what I want. I think it only does exactly what I tell it to. So I think that I would be comfortable saying that I'd be happy to move forward with the proposed changes. But if we have a chance, if we have time to come back, then that would be my preference. If there's no rush, then bringing it back in two weeks is a good idea, or four weeks.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Henry?
Yeah, what is the timeline on Gary McGinn's rewrite of the TOD zone?
They just started, I believe, so I don't know that we have a timeline at this point.
You would maybe expect it to be months, not weeks. I'm not, I don't want to assume anything, but...
Yes.
Maybe at the same time, a few months and not a year.
Yes, I think so.
Commissioner Jensen?
Yeah, I was just going to comment that I would be comfortable to recommend this, give a positive recommendation to council to pass this or approve this with the, the comments that we've provided to staff this evening, and not, not require it to be brought back to the planning commission. I think that's reasonable. We've really only questioned a couple of things about specific language, and I'm sure staff took adequate notes to that effect. That would be my opinion.
Maybe to that, that point, I specifically heard a suggestion that, that 3B be modified to say something along the lines of no more than 50, 50% or up to 50%. And then there was considerable discussion about C, and how simply to clarify that to mean what I think both we as commissioners and staff would like to see accomplished with that. Were there any other things that anybody that I missed as part of that discussion?
The one issue I'm hesitant to get into on this amendment is addressing the issue of amenities for projects of less than 20. I'd like to punt that over to Gary's group. Unless you feel strongly that we should take a timeout and deal with that now and bring it back. If we're going to deal with that issue, I think we need to bring it back to planning commission.
Yeah, I raised that, and I, I'm very comfortable letting that be dealt with down the road. So that's my thought on that, at least. Are we missing anything in terms of what we'd like to see staff address before this goes to the council? Does staff have any questions of us? Any, any clarity that we can provide?
I feel like you made it pretty clear. So I think we could handle, you know, working on B and C to make some of those word swaps, and then some clarifications on what are definitions of amenity space, and how big that could or should be, and things like that. I think we can tackle that.
Okay, thank you. Well, I don't see any little blue, there we go. Commissioner Urquidyaga?
I would be prepared to make a motion if there's no objection.
Please go for it.
I would recommend that we approve item two, the Development Services Department requests an ordinance text amendment to section 14.23.160 sub 3 to clarify amenity space requirements for developments with 20 or more residential units in the interim transit-oriented development zone, with the adjustments of the language to subsections B and C to clarify the meaning of those as discussed by the council, or as by the commission.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Urquidyaga. Do we have a second?
I'll second her motion to forward a positive recommendation on item two as stated.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. That was Commissioner Jensen. Any discussion on the motion?
I just wanted to clarify that we're not approving it, but that we are recommending it for approval to the council, because that was stated not quite the same.
Thank you for that clarification. That is the case. This is a legislative act that the council would act on. Any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I think particularly with this being legislative, we will do a roll call vote. I'm gonna make sure I don't miss anybody. So we'll start with Commissioner Deborah Jensen.
Aye.
Commissioner Urquidyaga?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lisa Jensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Brian Henry?
Aye.
Commissioner Knutson?
Aye.
And I vote aye. The motion carries all in favor. And moving on, item number three. This is a request made by Dudley and Associates to change the zoning. And I'm gonna go ahead and stop. Staff, help me with this. Is there a concern or some protocol that I haven't caught on yet about reading items four, sorry, three and four in at the same time?
No, if you could read those in at the same time, that'd be great.
Okay, thank you. So both items three and four, I'll start with proposed zone change. Request to change the zoning from residential agriculture to R1.10 for 2.31 acres located at approximately 4,100 North Canyon Road, and 3.42 acres located at 3956 North Canyon Road. Accompanying that, item number four, the same applicant, Dudley and Associates, request concept plan approval for a 27-lot, single-family subdivision in what would be the R1.10 zone located at approximately 430 East, 3950 North. Mr. Ardmore?
So first, we'll zoom into the site here. So as you can see on the map, you've got temp view on the right, Canyon Road on the left. The properties we're dealing with are highlighted in the red boxes. These are remnants of the residential agricultural zone from when this used to be more horse properties. You could see that's been broken up over the years into subdivisions of R18 and R110. So the applicants have been through these neighborhoods and tried to accumulate some properties together to, to do a subdivision. And that, oops, that was in the wrong spot. So this got moved north, but if you moved this rectangle south, you could see that it would line up with this right here. So they're, they're proposing lots up in that area, and then eight or nine more lots here. The disconnect occurs with this property that goes all the way through from Canyon Drive to this street here. They tried to work with the property owner. I didn't want to participate, so they're, they're moving on without that connection. And that's why you have the cul-de-sacs where we would prefer them not to be, but there really wasn't any other solution there. Here's a better, a better picture of it. So you, there's two homes here that are fairly new, large homes. They didn't want to participate either. Staff doesn't see those coming anytime soon, so the cul-de-sac here. They did leave a connection up to the north for future development through what would, remaining RA zone. So as staff went through this, the 27 building lots in the R110 zone matches the general plan for the area. It meets the, kind of the neighboring densities of the subdivisions that have occurred out there. And we would recommend that planning commission forwards a positive recommendation to the city council on that zone change, and approves the concept plan.
Mr. Ardmore, thank you. Any questions of staff?
I think we do have an average share on the line.
Any questions of the applicant, or would the applicant like to present anything? And before we go there, Commissioner Henry?
Just curious, on the southern cul-de-sac, I guess though, with the upper subdivision, so there would be no way in the future when that property owner does want to participate to continue that cul-de-sac through, or design this in a way that would make that go through more like the concept plan, the second plan?
Yeah, so they, they did show a concept going that way. But I think to be able to make the connection that they believe will actually happen in the near future, they decided to put the road through here rather than down here. Of course, they would lose another lot to do both, but that's a, I think that's a question that you can ask the applicant of different plans that they went through, settle on this.
Okay, Commissioner Jensen, Lisa?
My question was about cul-de-sacs also. In our last meeting, we were talking about how cul-de-sacs were frowned upon, or even not allowed anymore in development, and these, this one has two. Now, I'm assuming it's because that's the only, or that's the most efficient way for this land to be developed. But what was the point of making that a rule if, if there's always a workaround?
So they're not disallowed by code. It says they are, what's the word it uses? Discouraged. So, so we don't like them any more than you do. But in situations like this, where there's no other way to access this property up here and get back out in a reasonable manner, and here, I suppose you could take the street out here, but they don't control this lot either. So they still wouldn't be able to get out to temp view. So I think it, in this situation, it's just the properties that they were able to accumulate and get control of, it left them with limited options for access.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we weren't setting so many precedents that we had undiscouraged the idea of cul-de-sacs by continually approving them. I have, I have one more question. In attachment one, the top left corner, there's a home there. Is that going to be removed, or is that, is that staying there?
That's staying. So all this green up here isn't part of it. It just starts at the red line. It just starts at the red line and comes down to this blue line here.
I see that now. Thank you for clarifying that. Thank you.
Overlay was in the wrong spot.
Mr. Urquaga.
Yes. In my days as part of TMAC, one of the things that we talked about was maybe having footpaths sort of dedicated or planned for between developments when you couldn't connect them with roads. Is that something that has ever been considered or recommended, that there might be some sort of an easement so that people could get from like one to the other by going between houses? Is that?
So it's not codified. It's a great idea. I think the staff would support that kind of situation and even move towards codifying that in the future. So if that is an option for the developer, I think we can support that.
Okay, Justin, again.
Ms. Jensen, Lisa Jensen, also an answer to your question. We actually did look at just stubbing this out here because someday in the future, those houses could come down and a road could go through. But this is a collector class road here, and this is a collector class road here. When you have a straight cut through like that through residential lots, sometimes that can become a higher speed cut through than what you would want. So we intentionally forced a turn movement to slow down traffic to the neighborhood and to keep this in the future from becoming that kind of cut through that the people who live along it would not like. That was part of the thinking on that also.
Which is what you want to use cul-de-sacs for, so that's good. Okay.
Any other questions of staff? Okay, is the applicant with us tonight? Do they have anything they'd like to add?
Yeah, I see Roger Dudley's on if he wants to say anything.
Mr. Dudley? I can see you're muted. We'll give you another second and then we'll assume that, there you go. Anything to add? Roger? We'll come back if you do. In the meantime, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anyone representing the neighborhood that would like to speak? There we go. We will start with Bonnie Morrow.
Hi, Bonnie Morrow, North Tim View.
Yes, thank you. Please go ahead.
I just wanted to make the statement that the North Tim View neighborhood has had many, many meetings over the years over this property, and it's no stranger to the neighbors. We, I, the cul-de-sacs that were brought up are a welcome because 3950 is a major road that people use between Tim View Drive and Canyon Road. And having more pour on to that, especially that large cul-de-sac to the north, we appreciate that they pour out onto Canyon Road, and it calms the traffic in this area because there are a lot of children. So in this case, we really appreciate the cul-de-sacs. And we're glad to see that they're big, nice lots, and we appreciate this plan moving forward, that it is cohesive with the surrounding neighborhood.
Thank you, Ms. Morrow. All I see is a number, ends in 688. Would you please state your name and any comments that you have?
Hello, this is Cindy Reed, and I live right on Canyon Road, right across from 3950. And as Bonnie said, we've gone through several proposed buildings, build outs and plans for this area. What I'm concerned about, and I only have the postcard, I don't have the cul-de-sac looking, is there someplace where that's online at the city? Because I couldn't find that, any details of the concept plan.
You're talking about what we're looking at right now.
With the cul-de-sac, yeah, with the layout and the cul-de-sacs and stuff like that. That was never presented or mailed to me. Is that available online?
Staff, Aaron, do you want to?
Yeah, so this presentation that we're doing right now, showing the cul-de-sacs is available on YouTube. If you'd like an emailed copy, just get ahold of me, Aaron Ardmore, during or after this meeting, and I can correspond with you on that.
Okay, because I can see that Bonnie was positive, and Bonnie's my neighbor, and so that makes it more positive for me. My biggest concern is on the postcards in dissecting what was there. The change to the R110 zoning, I thought it was interesting how in the, in the red lined area that they're including houses that already exist that have, that have much larger than 10,000 square foot lots. Two of those have, like the one has almost an acre lot, and the other one has about a half acre lot. And then the one on the corner is probably a .25 acre lot. But the actual property right there, and I'm just talking about the 3950, I'm not talking about the strip of Tim View Drive to Canyon Road, other segment that is placed out. I'm just talking about this larger, kind of more square one. The amount of acreage right there that's not already an existing house is only 1.6 acres. Because I looked carefully at this back in 19, I don't know, it was in the year 2000 or so, they were going to develop that. So that's only 1.6 acres. And then the other area that they're developing. So they have on here 3.42 acres at 3956 North Canyon Road. So they're not really working on their 27 lot family subdivision with 3.42 acres. They've only got 1.6 acres.
Maybe I can clarify that, Chair?
Please, yes, thank you.
So the areas being zoned from RA to R110 is just a portion of what they're developing. The rest is already zoned R110, so that's why the acreage isn't adding up with your numbers. So the entire development is going to be more than what they're actually requesting a zone change on tonight. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm, okay. Well, that's better because I couldn't figure out how you're going to squish 27 single family lots onto 1.6 acres and then that other little skinny strip that is being zoned. So you, so the concept is going to lay out more on all of that open farming type land that's?
Exactly. Yep.
Okay, so I would be interested in seeing that. And so with R110, then we're looking at quarter acre lots, right, on each for single family homes?
10,000 square foot lots, yep.
Okay, and that's three minutes?
That's everything I was wondering about. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anybody else at the moment that wants to comment. We'll give it a minute. Maybe a few moments, maybe not a minute.
No more public comments at this time?
Thank you. Didn't sound like Mr. Dudley was real anxious to say anything. We'll give him one more chance. If there's anything Roger Dudley wants to add.
You're muted, Mr. Dudley.
We'll take that as, he doesn't have anything to add?
He's trying to say something, but his microphone's not working. Mr. Dudley, could you call in on the phone line that's on the screen and we can talk to you over the phone?
Yeah, he's definitely trying to talk to us, so don't give up on him, Dave.
There he is. Okay. Tell you what, Roger, feel free to interrupt us when you're on. We're going to go ahead and close the public hearing, and I'm going to share just a couple of thoughts really quickly. I really appreciate what I'm sensing among my colleagues on the commission as an aversion to cul-de-sacs. I agree that from a design perspective and just in terms of creating functional circulation routes at the neighborhood level, they can be really damaging. At the same time, I think this proposal is a good example of where, you know, at times they, they actually probably are the right design tool to use. The zone change from my perspective, I view that simply as a no-brainer. And with the concept plan that, as I understand, it simply conforms to the requirements for the subdivision in the R110 zone, I think likewise that's pretty straightforward. So those are just a few of my thoughts. Still not hearing from Mr. Dudley. Seeing, but not hearing. Commissioner Urquaga.
Yes, I actually am familiar with this neighborhood, and this lot size, this kind of configuration seems to me that it really fits well in that part of the city. And so I don't see any reason not to suggest approval of this at this point.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Deborah Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll just probably go along in the same vein. I think that the rezoning accomplishes the general plan statement of providing more housing in a time and a place where agriculture is not thriving any longer. I think the R110 zoning fits the context very well and is appropriate. And in terms of the site plan, I, of course, I noticed the cul-de-sacs immediately too, but what I did appreciate is that should things change between this initial site plan and the actual execution of building the horizontal infrastructure on the ground, you know, it's possible that the Harris family could change their mind. And that cul-de-sac provides a connection, a potential connection across that property. You'd have to reconfigure some of the lots a little bit, but I don't think you'd lose any yield. And you could then connect to the road that exits the property to the north connecting to North 430 East. So there's a potential to make a connection if things change in the future. So I appreciated that about the plan. And I think, given the sort of landlock that they're in here, that it's an appropriate layout, and I would be in favor of it.
Thank you. Commissioner Henry.
This is probably too early to get into this, but I actually drive 3950 north regularly, and I agree with Bill Pepperoni, that is a very fast road. People cutting from Tim View down to Canyon Road do move very quickly, and it makes me question, as we're putting this road in, does something need to be done to 3950 while we're there? Maybe some bulbouts going into that cul-de-sac to help calm the traffic a bit because that can be a very fast road. And as well as hoping that the Harris family does come around on this because it would be nice to have that connection through the lot there. My only other concern is just the double-sided nature of those lots, lot three through six. Can't really come up with a good solution for it, but it's always hard to have back fences along Canyon Road. Just makes Canyon Road a faster road, but I can't really see any other solution to that, so I'd be in favor of approving tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Henry. Commissioner Lisa Jensen.
Mr. Henry's point brings me to another question besides the one I was going to ask, which is if we require larger housing developments to have street-friendly development, then should we require these ones to face onto the street and maybe just have driveways on the backside? Is that something that's only meant for multifamily developments? Or is that something that would apply here because it does really make an unfriendly street facade to have fenced off and be like a Speedway instead? Then my other comment I was going to make was, like Ms. Deborah Jensen said, that it seems like a reasonable plan. It doesn't conflict with the general plan. It's weird to have the two subdivisions not be connected, but like was said, I feel like they can blend together well, even if the cul-de-sacs don't go through, there's still enough frontage onto the proposed roads there that it could work.
Okay. Thank you. Just a couple of questions, I guess, from me for staff. I assume that we're seeing kind of these two discontinuous parts of this project at the same time, just as a matter of ease of review and processing and that type of a thing, but they're going to be separate subdivision plots.
Right.
In some ways, effectively different developments.
That's correct.
I had not thought about the Canyon Road kind of treatment there, so I guess I have a thought and then a question, and I really appreciate the comments that have been made relative to the orientation of the lots there and what that does for Canyon Road. I'm a fan of homes fronting onto roads up to a certain point relative to the, maybe average travel speed on the road and traffic volume on the road and that type of a thing. And for me, I think Canyon Road might be approaching those thresholds where I'd maybe prefer to not see driveways out there. I think certainly from an aesthetic standpoint, potentially it would look a lot better to have homes front onto Canyon Road, but I'm not sure that me as a motorist, I'd be inclined to drive any slower, just given the geometry of the road, you know, really long, straight and that type of thing. I think those are the things that are going to contribute to travel speed much more than whether or not there are driveways there. Again, I say that, truly appreciating the point, but that being said, what would that look like? What are the requirements for this developer to improve that frontage, to maintain it? Help me with that.
David?
I was hoping David Day would be able to address those. I know they have some regulations about driveways on collectors. Uh, looks like he's ready.
Yeah, so currently, this is David Day with Pubble Works. Uh, currently our, uh, ordinances state that we discourage, uh, any driveway connections to a collector or arterial roads. And for the same reasons that you've just been discussing, uh, uh, the nature of, uh, a collector-type road with traffic volumes and the conflicts with driveways and, and possible vehicle, you know, collisions with, uh, cars backing out and such. Don't lend theirself too well to, to having all those driveways. Um, the, the, the frontages would be similar to all of the other frontages in the, from the back of curb to, uh, planter strips and sidewalks, but what we normally see along these, uh, types of lots when they're not allowed to connect to the road is a, a backyard wall uh, that, that does, uh, kind of separate it from, you know, the interaction with the road. So it's just uh, a kind of a big blank wall.
Thank you. One thing I'm really familiar with and I, I don't have a good answer for it other than cities doing more maintenance than I think a lot of times we like to do. That, uh, you know, that streetscape, you have the roadway, you have the curb and gutter. You typically then have a, a space between the curb and gutter and the sidewalk, that park strip. And then you'd have, you said it'd be a wall and I would hope that it wouldn't be something with some permanence and you know, durability and that type of a thing. Maintaining that park strip. Um, you know, I hate the idea that that's gonna be all hardscape. I'd wanna see that landscaped and improved and that type of a thing. Uh, what kind of success does Provo have at getting that to happen, having people actually care for it, or is this does city crews maintain that space? How does that work?
That, that is maintained by either the property owners that have backyard uh, frontage on that, uh, um, on that section or a homeowners association. Uh, uh, this, this same, uh, developer, uh, did another project on Canyon Road and, and they've, uh, included the, the planter strip with a, a, a quite nice wall and street trees. So it does look quite nice, so um, i- if you're interested in looking at that one, that one's already completed, so.
Is that, sorry, is that project just to the north of this one?
Yes.
Like across from the car wash at that intersection there?
Uh, no, it is further north, um, uh, north of the elementary school.
Okay, so well north of here. Um, I'll tell you, you know, the idea of there being some kind of owners' association with a project of this size, that's a real challenge. Um, and I don't wanna go overboard in discussing this issue, but just the idea that somebody that owns Lot 6, for example, to take the, maybe the worst case, that their home's gonna back up against a, an unbroken masonry wall, you know, where there's not a gate or something like that, and yet somehow they're gonna maintain landscaping on the other side of that, you know, that would require them to take equipment or whatever down the cul-de-sac and back up Canyon Road. Um, I don't have an answer for it uh, in terms of, you know, how that happens unless the city takes responsibility for that or maybe an HOA. That being said, uh, still I, yeah, please.
Could I, could I interject one more comment? Um, I, I've got a text from the developer uh, that's saying that they'll, they're going to do an HOA and maintain that park strip along Canyon Road. So even though they're, they're not able to connect to you, they're, they're texting me, so that was from the developer.
Can I interject a comment, Dave?
Yeah, whoever that is, is that Mr. Henry?
Yes, Brian Henry.
Please.
Uh, so this is something that I, to make the, the best of a difficult situation, the area is too narrow to do a double-sided road. And so we end up with a street on both sides. Um, and this is more just a suggestion in the future, as we look at these, the backside of those lots on Canyon Road, we're gonna have on-street parking where no one's ever gonna park. It's just kind of wasted asphalt space. And I, to, to think outside the box a little bit, could we not take that space? Canyon Road is a major bike thoroughfare. Uh, thinking in a, in a section view, what, what I love to see in projects like this, and we did this on a project in Heber and we've done it on a project in Salem where we, we couldn't get around this scenario. Uh, what we did is we did the fence and then we did a 10-foot buffer. I don't know if that would be possible on this project of landscaping, then the pedestrian sidewalk, then the curb and gutter, then the bike lane, and then a planter strip where the parking would be, the on-street parking would be, that helps to narrow the road to help calm traffic. Would staff be ever interested in that type of a, a scenario where we do have homes backing onto a major thoroughfare to create that tree-lined street so that it helps to calm traffic and push those trees right out against the traffic?
So you have a protected bike lane there with the, the raised curb out adjacent to the travelway? Is that what you're saying?
More or less, yeah. That it would be a protected bike way. The, the bikes would be separated from the moving traffic by a, a least an eight-foot planted median.
We'll start with community development staff. Any thoughts on that?
Well, that's a very different, uh, road cross-section, so we'd have to defer to David Day.
Come on. Deferr to engineering for something like that? That, uh, I'm not, I'm not sure that I, man. Okay, Mr. Day?
Yeah, we're, we're pretty limited on Canyon Road. We've got about, uh, 46 feet of asphalt width up there, so, you know, that would be, uh, a median and two travel lanes and, like you say, a park strip. Uh, or a, a parking area, not a park strip, but, uh, normally people like that to park. If, if we didn't have any parking there, we could probably look at other uses of the property, but in a short, uh, one-block section like that, uh, it would be, you know, atypical to just treat it for that, that, that short of a length. It would be more of a, hey, what are we, what are we going to do with this whole Canyon Road area? What, what do we want it to look like and function like and, and then put together a, a, a design for that whole area and then start building it that way? Rather than maybe just one little piece of it. So, uh, I, I think that, uh, you know, as people come up with ideas, we'd, we'd wanna take those through the process and and try to come up with a cross-section that would work for the whole corridor right there.
I guess, David, that would be a suggestion, uh, 'cause the, the new Preserve, uh, development that was referenced earlier, that's just north of here, it feels like the road got so much more wide. It, it got so wide when that development went in for no reason. Uh, there's a park strip there and yet there, no one's ever gonna park there. And so it seems like to have something more amenable to what is happening, like cycling. There, there's bikes all day long down Canyon Road. And yet, that section in front of the Preserve now feels scary on a bicycle where before there wasn't even a sidewalk. And it, it just, and even on Lot 19 and 1, to create that buffer with trees, uh, and obviously this does need to relate to the entire road, but to get it started on a project like this, maybe we're, we're, we're too far behind the gun on something like that. But just something to kind of think bigger, uh, as we move forward, to address things like this where we, we cater to what's already happening rather than stick with a legacy that no one's using.
Yeah, I, 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 uh, agree with a lot of that. I, I just, uh, would like to, you know, make sure that everybody's looking at it and, and making conscious decisions of how we use that right away. Uh, in, in other areas, you know, where we have more width, you know, there's more flexibility. Uh, the volumes that we have on Canyon Road for, for primarily vehicles, uh, uh, would indicate that we need a three-lane section. Uh, if, if we were to narrow that up to a, uh, just a double yellow, uh, then we would be able to go with just the two lanes in each direction and then we could use that other space for other uses and create a safer environment for bicyclists and stuff. So, you know, and those are, those are big decisions. We put the bike lanes down Canyon Road, uh, quite a few years back now. The, the time since, ti- time since tends to blend together, but I think it's been about five years. Uh, but I don't think we've painted them this far north. And so that's something that we need to probably work on. However, the, the paint doesn't provide a, a buffer for safety like a, a planted median would.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm just gonna have a little fun, Mr. Day, and for the record, point out that you did say we're fairly limited with 46 feet of asphalt. Which, in my opinions, man, that's a lot, that's a lot of room. You can do a lot with. Again, I, I say that kind of in jest and now, I feel like, uh, that's a great conversation, but it's probably one that, uh, is more appropriate. We're talking about the whole corridor, maybe Canyon Road and that type of a thing. Um, I can only imagine what the pushback would be to, to try to implement that, you know, maybe incrementally on a, on a piece like this. And I think that's kind of what you're saying, Mr. Day, at least a little bit there. Um, I, I'm very comfortable. I, I guess I'd say maybe rather, I, I'm much more comfortable with the idea that there's gonna be a group that's gonna be responsible to maintain that space out there. I think potentially, you know, that, that can be beautified with the development well-maintained and not, you know, uh, be an eyesore as part of the corridor. So, that being said, um, I'm still showing hands raised by Mr. Henry and Lisa Jensen. We'll go to Lisa first.
Okay, can they hear me now?
We'll go to Roger Dudley rather. Roger, anything to add?
I'm so sorry. I don't, I don't, not sure I can see and hear everything, but for some reason you couldn't hear me. That, now I know what it's like to, to not have a voice. Uh, thank, thanks for being patient with us on this. Um, a couple of items that maybe just of importance to you. We've actually re, uh, rethought this idea, the long cul-de-sac, the one on the north. We're going to make that a bubble and stub a road to the north. So we're going to eliminate that long cul-de-sac. That was, uh, that was an afterthought, um, uh, so that the long cul-de-sac will be eliminated and the road will go to the east, turn and go up and connect into the property to the north. We have hopes of acquiring that property and making it part of this project. So that eliminates the one cul-de-sac. Um, I'd be happy to answer any of the questions. I've been listening to your discussion. We did the project to the north called the Preserve and it built a beautiful wall against Canyon Road and landscaped it. And if you have a chance to see that, this is the same developer that's developing that property. He's done a number of projects in Provo. One is where the old Lutheran church was on 3700 North. You notice that that also has a wall against 3700 North and it's landscaped beautifully on the outside of the wall. So we've had some experience with this and it's worked very well for us.
Mr. Dudley, thank you. Maybe staff, can you go to an aerial and just kind of show us what, uh, what that looks like in terms of, of where that road would go to the north? Um, I really appreciate that, I think, from a design perspective. So it, it would go into a yet undeveloped property?
Right.
Okay.
It would go, go into the glacier property. We have hopes of acquiring that. Haven't been able to do that yet, but, uh, but then we would have a loop road, so that road would, would, would go east and west, go, go north and then loop back out to Canyon Road again. If that makes sense.
That seems like a definite improvement to me.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes?
Are you saying that you'll bring the cul-de, you'll change the cul-de-sac to a stub road here? Can you see the screen?
No, I'm not. You can tell that I'm...
So, Mr. Dudley, are you going to change the cul-de-sac into a stub road? And are you also going to keep the other stub road? That's...
No, we...
Does that one go away?
That would go away and it would just be a big loop that comes around and goes back out. And then we, the road would stub north into the existing subdivision to the north.
So if that's the case, would there be any opportunity to stub a road to the south to line up with, what is this street, Robert? See, see what that is? 480? Could there be a way to stub a road to the south that would line up with a future 480? Now would give us connectivity to the south and then to the north also through what you're going to do?
Yeah, we've, we've made several attempts to convince the Harris family that that really needs to happen with no, absolutely no. They've said no and, and no. We've, we've tried that.
The Harrises, all you have to do is stub that road and the future will take care of itself.
Uh, well, that's true, but, but the Harrises indicate they have no desire at all to have a road running through their property. They wanna keep it as it is.
No, it won't run through their property. It would stub at the property line. It wouldn't run through their property. It would stub at the property line. So that when this subdivision gets built and eventually 10 years or 20 years from now when they decide to develop, then the connection's made.
Um, well, I, I suppose anything's possible. We've just made a lot of attempts to do that. That, in other words, that'll take another lot out of our project.
Yeah, but your day will lock back with taking out that one stub road.
Um, I'm not seeing that, I guess. Um, in other words, if we're stubbing the road from the north into the Harrises, is that what you're saying?
Uh, let's sit down and look at a map tomorrow, Mr. Dudley.
Sure, sure, happy to do that.
Let me, uh, for Mr. Pepperoni.
Yeah.
With this proposal, is it a matter of the lots meeting a specific minimum lot width requirement? Minimum square footage requirement and that type of a thing to where additional stub streets indeed cost the developer density, or is it a matter of they have a certain number of lots that they could, could design a project for without exceeding a, a density ceiling?
Well, if they're asking for the R110, then they probably are. Can end up losing a lot. Um, a lower zone, R1A, would give them more flexibility to do what you're thinking of. But R1A zone probably wouldn't be as enthusiastically accepted by the neighborhood. I was just thinking that if they're getting rid of this stub for that one, they could put another one here.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I'm just gonna speak for myself and, uh, Mr. Dudley, I think on this item, unless my colleagues really disagree, we're gonna, we're gonna just move on and deliberate among the commission at this point. Um, if I'm guessing what the lot width is, this property's maybe a thousand feet long, I don't feel that two stub streets to the north is excessive. And I don't feel that potentially, you know, designing with this project to connection into 400 East is excessive either. Um...
I think it's 480 East, Dave.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for that. Those are my thoughts. And I don't know what latitude that we have necessarily. If the zoning is changed to compel the applicant to design for those types of connections, although I'm guessing that there, there are some mechanisms that, that we could rely on to, to make that happen. If that's what the commission and the council want to see. And I'll leave my thoughts just at that and...
Anderson, I think that if they took out this one and just did that, they would exceed our block length requirement. David Day, chime in on this if I'm not correct. If they got rid of this and only had that, this would exceed the block length requirement, which would be a violation of the code. If they did stub something else out, that would, could possibly get them around that block length requirement. But I'd like David Day's opinion on that.
Yeah, so our, our block length is 500 feet and, and you're right. But if, if you go to the aerial photography of that area, I think that whole 480 East road right there is lined with homes already. So in order to stub through there, you'd be demoing homes.
Oh, I didn't realize that.
So I don't know how, how good of an option that is. I, I think maybe that would not be as good.
Make sure you point that out, Dave. I didn't realize that the houses were existing there.
Yeah, so that kind of blocks that for now, but I think that we could look at that and make sure that we're, we're following our city ordinances appropriately so that we don't exceed our block lengths.
And those kind of issues would be resolved in the preliminary and final subdivision applications that they would go through after this.
Okay. Again, back to the commission. I'm seeing Lisa Jensen hand raised. Do you have anything?
Yeah, it's a good thing. It's not, it's just a virtual hand because otherwise it would be really... I mostly, a lot of other things have been addressed, but I wanted to just chime in on my increasingly strong feelings about lots 3, 4, 5, and 6 on Canyon, that face on the Canyon Road. And I know that it's possible to build a really nice wall and to have it look really nice and to have it be maintained. But I have an R110 subdivision in my neighborhood that has done just that and it doesn't get taken care of. And not only that, but it really doesn't accomplish that purpose that we keep going back to, which is that we want it to be pedestrian-friendly. And you have a big tall wall with dogs barking on the other side that you can't see and nobody pulls the weeds and nobody shovels the snow even though they have a development agreement that's supposed to be taking care of that. And so it's all well and good when it's built and those are the promises that are made. But 10 years down the road, when the, when the homeowners association or whoever's in charge of it goes defunct, it's, it's, it's not a pedestrian-friendly place. And it really does separate neighborhoods, which makes lots 3, 4, 5, and 6 more isolated in their own little cul-de-sac area. But as far as the cohesion of a neighborhood and making it a, a safe place to walk and a friendly place to walk, it doesn't do that. And I think that the road that, that I've seen in my neighborhood that's like this is, has got fairly high traffic and lots of access points for pedestrians. So I just wanted to give that feedback in case that's helpful as we give suggestions or conditions or whatever we might feel like we need to do.
Thank you, Ann. Thank you for your patience there. Commissioner Henry. We're gonna, Commissioner Henry, I see a hand raised there.
All right, one other quick question. On 3950 North, you know there's an existing sidewalk there. Will that sidewalk be removed and then replaced with a, a, the proper median, a planted median strip?
That is the treatment we've done on all other subdivisions that have the combo. We convert it to the current standard where it has the planter strip.
Okay, even though there's an existing sidewalk, that sidewalk will be removed?
Correct.
Okay. And then one more, one more comment. I apologize to Mr. Dudley for hijacking his project, but with these cul-de-sacs, or I guess we'll, we'll only have one cul-de-sac at this point. To make the best of that situation, I've seen several times where they'll take a cul-de-sac like that, create a planted center so that it kind of makes it into a one-way. It's almost like a one-access roundabout. I saw one up in Salt Lake. It was gorgeous. Had this beautiful heritage oak planted in the middle of it and really just kind of ate up all that asphalt in the cul-de-sac. Would something like that be considered, given that they're gonna have an HOA in this property to maintain it? To, to make the best of cul-de-sacs and maybe in the future to codify that, if you have a cul-de-sac, it becomes this more planted style that doesn't require so much asphalt and create so much heat?
Let's go to David Day for that. Any immediate thoughts?
Can you repeat that again? I had like three people texting me telling me more comments to make. But could you just give me that one more second or?
Let me try, Commissioner Henry. So the idea is to do a planted island, I assume with the raised curb around the outside of it, in cul-de-sacs, which would help beautify the cul-de-sac, reduce the amount of impervious surface potentially at least, need for storm drain system, different things like that. And it would also discourage people from using the cul-de-sac as storage space because you would no longer be able to park vehicles at a, at a 90-degree angle to the curb around the cul-de-sac and do some things like that. That being said, you know, you can maybe tell that I'm an advocate for that. But public safety people sometimes are a real challenge to work with when you start to talk about things like that.
Yeah, so we have that in a couple cul-de-sacs in Provo, but they tend to be the larger ones. And so, you know, you end up increasing the size of the cul-de-sac from the standard and, and then making room for the, the planted median in the center. But if, if, if this was like a private road, I think we could probably look at something like that. A public road's a little tougher to do in, in that that would become a, kind of a private facility in a public road where we would probably want the homeowners association to take care of it. So I, I don't know of any like that in Provo right now where we've got it in a public road, but I may be wrong.
I assume that, sorry, sorry.
That's, that's not, not meant to be a yes or a no. I think that we need to look at that and, and assess whether that's really how we want to have cul-de-sacs. Just the open area in the middle hardly ever gets used. I, I agree with that. You know, most of the activity is around the outside and you've got that asphalt in the middle that stays in really good condition because it really has no traffic on it, so.
Although center medians provide snow storage space as well as less plowing because you're not plowing the whole cul-de-sac. So I, I would just recommend that staff consider that for future cul-de-sacs. How can we make that so that those cul-de-sacs, we make the best of a bad situation with a cul-de-sac?
Yeah, I, I know in really heavy winters, the center of the cul-de-sac is a great place to pile the snow. So I agree, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Jensen, Deborah Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't think we're gonna have heavy snow anymore. Judging by what's going on with our climate. Anyway, these have all, we've kind of gotten a little beyond the topic of just these two items on our agenda tonight, but we've had a really good discussion. And one of the things I'm hearing from the commissioners is that streets are more than just for moving cars. And this is a topic that has been coming up for a long time. I think it's really important to the future of our community that we start relooking at some of these regulations that, for example, 46 feet wide, I understand maybe someday, the thinking is that Canyon Road becomes a four-lane or a three-lane or who knows what. But it goes through a residential area. And as such, it should be designed thoughtfully and not just to move cars. And this whole issue, and I've had this conversation with Mr. Pepperoni in the past, this whole issue of building subdivisions that turn their back on the street and are inward-facing creates really hostile environments for pedestrians, bicyclists, and even just people driving through that area. And one that really comes to mind for me is Seven Peaks Boulevard, south of Center Street. That is a relentless, ugly stretch of road with walls on each side. There's a bike lane there, but it's just meant like, it's, it's an auto sewer. It's just meant to move, move those cars through. It is ugly. And there's some of that over on the west side as well. And I would like to see us as a commission work with community development and others at some point to try to address some of these issues that we're talking about tonight. And I love the idea of having, it, it could even be a mountable curb in a cul-de-sac for, you know, emergency service vehicles or whatever. But anyway, there's, there's a lot to chew on here. That's my two cents.
I can't resist but to throw a couple more cents in as well. This is not a contrary thought to what you just said, Deborah, but relative to having limited access to certain roads and how that road then can accommodate pedestrian and bicycle traffic, maybe let's just say non-motorized traffic in the form of a trail or something like that. When there's not vehicular access to that road, like with driveways and you don't have those interruptions and that potential conflict along the corridor, I think those, those places actually can be really functional then for, like I said, non-motorized traffic, people that, you know, riding bikes and running and walking and that type of a thing. Big picture, it's, it's a balancing act. I think a lot of different things to, to consider. In this case, I feel like, in my opinion, what we're seeing here tonight, all things considered, it's probably not a bad fit. All in my thoughts with that. Any other commissioners want to comment on this before we, we call the question? I do feel like we've done a pretty deep dive on a lot of different things, some of which, again, like Commissioner Jensen just suggested, I think probably could be great material for future work session kind of discussions with staff and that sort of a thing. That being said, Lisa Jensen, please.
So I feel like I'm ready to make a motion on item three, but I just want to ask staff a clarifying question about item number four before we move forward with that portion of it. If, if we like the idea of what's presented here, but we have concerns about the pedestrian friendliness of it or, or the street layout or whatever, what is your recommendation for how we attack that in a motion? Do we recommend it with conditions? Or do we continue it until we see that? Because we never see it again. How much of our, how much hand do we want to have in it, I guess is what it comes down to. Staff, what do you, what's your advice for how to handle that?
You could ask that they require that the preliminary plan come back before you, but on the other side of that, if they meet the requirements of our engineering standards, you both have a lot of ability to force one preference over another.
So even with the design standards for development that, that encourage pedestrian friendliness, that doesn't apply to a single-family subdivision?
Not if that subdivision is meeting the engineering standards for the roads, the block length, those types of things. I don't think so.
Okay, so the best we can do is, if we're, if we're okay with you guys being the final review for the street layout, the best we can do is just strongly suggest to the developer that this is something we would like him to take into account to make the neighborhood as nice as possible.
Yes, beyond that, then you're looking at, you know, encouraging the city council to do some type of development agreement on the zone change.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Jensen, you just touched on this, potentially making a motion on item number three. We've done a pretty deep dive discussing items three and four together. We would look for separate motions on those. For item number three, the commission will be making a recommendation to the city council. Item number four, this, the planning commission will be either approving or denying the proposed concept plan.
Yes, would you like me to go forward with a motion?
Boy, I sure would.
Okay, I would like to make a motion for item three that we recommend. We have a positive recommendation for a zone change request for, from residential agriculture to R110 for the properties described located at 4100, 4100 North Canyon Road and 3956 North Canyon Road in the North Tempe neighborhood.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
All second.
Okay, I think that was Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second discussion on the motion. I'm gonna lead out and suggest that if the commission's serious about wanting to see changes made to the concept plan, then recommending approval, you know, may present some challenges to that. Kind of like I think Mr. Pepperoni said, once the zoning's in place, discretion on the part of any reviewing body is kind of thrown out the window. If the applicant meets the standards, then the approval's administrative and it's very cut and dry. And there's little that can be done to influence changes beyond just the standard being met. So maybe that's just more commentary than anything.
Can I respond to that?
Yeah.
This is Lisa. I feel like we've, we had a couple people say before that it, it seemed like a reasonable plan. It was a residential area predominantly growing that way, not being used as agricultural. Fits the general plan designation. So though I understand what you're saying, opens the door for other changes that we don't have any oversight for. I feel like this is the logical step. It's, there's, no one's gonna come in and decide they want to put a farm there or plant an orchard there at this point, is my, is my view, so.
Okay, perfect. Commissioner Jensen, the other Commissioner Jensen.
Yeah, I would just add that if, if the situation changes and other property becomes acquired before this is permitted or platted, then, you know, we have a different situation. But for what we have today and what we're, we're being asked to approve or recommend on, it is what it is.
Mr. Henry?
Yeah, as far as the zone change goes, I feel good about the zone change, but it seemed like there was some conversation about changing the concept. And so I'm a little nervous to approve the concept tonight. I'm fine with the zone change, but the concept sounded like that was kind of a moving target at this point. And maybe that becomes a, a motion to continue. Thoughts from the other commissioners?
So to some extent, that's where I'm at. And I, I completely agree. I mean, for me, the R110 zoning is a no-brainer. And, you know, I think we've gone, uh, we've, we've been very thorough about kind of vetting the design in a lot of different ways relative to the concept plan. I simply think that the cul-de-sac on the northern part should be done away with, and there should be two stub streets to the north, which is, I think, really the only way to facilitate, uh, kind of a functional development plan for the property to the north, um, and to have, you know, reasonable connectivity between, you know, those two parts of the neighborhood there. Um, uh, and I hate to get totally hung up on being completely paranoid about, you know, maybe the applicant working with the city in terms of making that design as, as functional as possible along those lines, but, uh, I haven't worked with very many people over the years that are going to sacrifice a lot just to make, you know, a planning commissioner feel good about a design. So short of them being compelled to do that, I, I think that probably becomes a challenge. And, yeah, that's, that's, I guess, how I, I look at, um, what would happen if the zone change does get approved, then I think our review of the concept plan becomes fairly meaningless. Um, if they meet a baseline standard, the project's going to get approved. And I'd love staff to, to weigh in if they see that differently at all. Or, um, if somebody wants us to go ahead and, and call the question and to take a vote on the motion, I think I'd certainly be ready to entertain that as well.
I would say, what's your suggestion for how to do, how to review it better without a loophole left behind?
To continue it until the applicant revises the concept plan and, um, probably for tonight to leave it at that. And again, I, I don't know what other people's feelings are about the need to have two stub streets to the north. I think that's probably the only thing that the applicant might object to.
Yeah, Dave, this is Roger. Can I make a comment?
You know, if it's specifically on that point of the concept plan design, yes.
Okay, Dave, what, what we've decided and what we've submitted, um, in, in our preliminary plans is to, is to stub the road basically going north between lots eight and nine.
Uh huh.
And so 40, 4075 north would come, that would become a knuckle, and then the road is being stubbed north into the glacier property between lots eight and nine. Then the road would go north and have another, another knuckle and would come back west through the, through the glacier property and back out onto Canyon Road and also connect to the road coming from the north that's, that's north of the glacier property. That's, that's what we plan to do. We're opposed to having two roads stubbing north. That costs us a lot. And that's, of course, economic and that would be really kind of, that, that's going to be really hard for us to, to sacrifice an additional lot. We think that the loop makes that one neighborhood when the glacier property, uh, as you see, there's a road stubbed in from the north into the glacier, into the RA zone. And that road would come in, connect to the road through the glacier, and there would be two bubbles, two bobouts, and that would make that a circular neighborhood. We feel that's really the best, the best plan. And we've talked to staff a little bit about that. I, I think that's the way it should be, yeah. Whatever you're drawing there, that's wonderful. And then it comes back to Canyon Road and also goes out to Canyon Road through here. So it makes a nice looped neighborhood with an access out to the north. So that gives us three accesses into that area.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so going back, I guess, with what we're seeing now, and I, I really do appreciate this, um, that particular image there, uh, Aaron or Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, but the street that would run through what we're seeing now before it turns to the north would be maybe eight or 900 feet long. Then it would go to the north, two or 300 feet. Um, I'm actually looking at the one to the south, yeah, there. So, uh, going from Canyon Road to the east, I'm guessing again, 800 feet, let's say 300 feet to the north, that's 1100 feet. And again, kind of guessing maybe 500 feet back, 1600 feet of local street without an interruption other than a turn or a connection to another local street. Um, it's kind of getting late, not real late. I'll speak a little bit more for the, I think that's kind of nuts. I really do, just from a neighborhood design perspective. We talked about block length requirements and, and Dave, maybe if you can just help us real quick, i- i- if there's something in the city's block length requirement that would require a street interruption, you know, in between there, then, you know, that, uh, presumably would be enforceable with, with the next step, you know, a preliminary plat proposal, and that would help me feel a lot more comfortable. Um, but otherwise, I, I'm not necessarily comfortable with the concept plan, uh, just having that one stub street at the end of a 800-foot-long run. That's just me. And, you know, again, I feel like, uh, we spent a lot of time on this. Um, I apologize to commissioners if you feel like we've spent more time on this than we need to. Um, if somebody's anxious to take a vote, we can just do that.
I'm comfortable voting on the zone change.
Mr. Day, would Mr. Dudley's proposal meet or violate the block length requirement?
So our, currently on our books is 500 feet block length. So a- as Commissioner Anderson was describing, that, that southern road should have some sort of a connection somewhere halfway through.
Um, that's good enough for me. I appreciate, uh, Commissioner Jensen's nudge. We're going to go ahead and do a roll call vote on item number three. We will start with Commissioner Deborah Jensen.
Do you want to restate what we're voting on, just so everyone remembers?
But, so this is item number three, the proposed zone change request to change the zoning of the two kind of distinct parcels or areas that we've been talking about. One that's 2.31 acres, the other that's 3.42 acres, um, located, uh, uh, at 4100 North Canyon Road and 3956 North Canyon Road. The motion is to recommend approval of the zone change to R110. That being said, uh, again, back to the roll call. Commissioner Deborah Jensen.
But I.
Commissioner Urquiaaga.
I.
Commissioner Jones.
I.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
I.
Commissioner Lisa Jensen.
I.
Commissioner Knutson.
I.
Commissioner Henry.
I.
And I vote aye, that's unanimous, the motion carries. So then moving on to item number four. I think we're ready for a motion on that.
I'd be ready to make a motion. Let me get to the right page.
Commissioner Urquiaaga, thank you.
Um, I recommend that we continue item number four. Dudley and Associates requests concept plan approval for a 27-lot, single-family subdivision in a proposed R110 zone located approximately 430 east, 3950 north. Um, pending revision of the concept plan to meet the requirements of the city street code.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Here goes Commissioner Deborah Jensen. Any discussion on the motion? I don't see any hands, so we will take it from the top again. Commissioner Deborah Jensen.
I.
Commissioner Urquiaaga.
I.
Commissioner Jones.
I.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
I.
Commissioner Lisa Jensen.
I.
Commissioner Henry.
I.
Commissioner Knutson.
I.
And I vote aye. Once again, that's unanimous. Item number four. Two items that I thought would be quick. Um, funny how that works. Item number five. This proposal comes from the Development Services Department, a proposal to change the zoning from neighborhood shopping center to medium-density residential for approximately 11 acres located at 1920 West Center Street. It looks like, uh, Mr. Ardmore again.
Okay, thanks. So if you're not familiar, this is the property, uh, known around town as the Smith's Lot. Uh, so Center Street here on the south, uh, Geneva here on the west, and then you've got Fort Utah Park to the north, some small commercial spaces to the west here. Uh, so this property is owned, uh, partially by Smith's grocery store, Kroger, um, and also the Cox family. Um, so it's kind of split between two owners, uh, the Smith's grocer leases the center part from the Cox family. Uh, so staff has come forward with a zone change at this time for these properties for, for many reasons. Um, I'm, I'm actually going to turn my time over to Bill as he has more history and, and background with the situation here.
So for quite some time, the city's been working to try to get a west-side grocery store. It's a priority to the west-side residents and also to the, um, administration. Uh, Smith's has had this property zoned for the grocery store for about 20 years and, um, they don't seem to be interested in moving forward with the grocery store. As we talk to other grocers about locating on other parcels in the west, this property being zoned SC2 has a chilling effect on parties being interested on other grocery store sites. Uh, the fear is that if a store gets going or under construction in another place in the city and then Smith decides to move forward on this site, there simply isn't room in the marketplace for two west-side grocery stores. So this SC2 zoning is essentially keeping us from getting the grocery store in another location, and Smith's does not seem to have any interest in moving forward with the grocery store here. To make it very clear, our preference would be to have a grocery store here. This, we would love to have it. We have just exhausted whatever opportunity or mechanism we can think of to get one to happen here, we've exhausted. Uh, other places we've talked about grocery stores are, are down at, um, Lakeview Parkway and, uh, the I-15, and then also up at, uh, 2000 North and Lakeview Parkway. Um, the West Side Committee and some of you members of the planning commission were familiar with the West Side planning effort. The West Side Committee put pretty low density through most of the west side, and they justified that low density by creating pockets or nodes of higher density in other areas. This area where the subject property is and the property to the east, the West Side planning effort decided would be appropriate for a town center, village type of development and for higher density. Some of the reasons that the West Side Committee, uh, decided that was not only because of the offset of the lower density elsewhere, but this is just a couple blocks from the I-15 entrance. Oh, excuse me, we have sewer availability here for this property, which, as you know, is a big issue through most of the west side. Also, as we as a staff talked about alternatives for changing the zoning, a single-family zone or a low-density zone didn't seem to be very appropriate in that that would cause quite a difference in property value. And we didn't want to do that to either Smith's or the Cox family. The MDR zone would be similar or greater than the property value for SC2 zone. Just to give some background on the difference of the two zones, it's been zoned SC2, like I said, for about 20 years. The building height in the SC2 zone is 65 feet. In the MDR zone, it's 45 feet. In an SC2 zone, there is no open space requirement. As we talked about in the first agenda item, 10% of the floor area is the open space requirement in the MDR zone. Um, there tends to be more landscaping in the MDR zone than in SC2 zones. Um, and then the biggest factor that surrounding neighborhoods always seem to focus on and be very concerned about is trip generation. That a- average daily trips you see on your screen under the SC2 zone, that's for one 50,000 square foot grocery store. Now, staff did that to be very conservative. Very few grocery stores are built at 50,000 square feet anymore. That's the 1990s model that the grocery stores don't follow anymore, but we're trying to be conservative in this comparison. If one fast food restaurant with a drive-up window went on the site, that would produce around 2,000 trips a day. Now compare that to what, 25 units to the acre over the entire site would tri- would generate? That's about that 1650 number. So, um, staff felt like in every way, an MDR zone was, uh, better for the neighborhood in terms of impact. I think a lot of people on the west side would love to see the grocery store there because they want the amenity. But when it comes to impact to the neighborhood, the MDR zone would be less than the SC2 zone that's there now. Um, that's kind of the background of what's going on with this. This is why the staff has brought this forward. That's why you don't have a concept plan with it like you usually do have on a, on a zone change, because it's a staff initiated, there is no plan at this point. Um, that's all the background I can think of at this point. I'll just answer questions if you have it.
So there was a little bit of discussion, Bill, or you presented at least, that there are other viable sites potentially for a grocer on the west side. I really, really struggle with that from a lot of different perspectives to understand and frankly, to believe. Have you had discussions with representatives of folks that are doing business in the state now? Kroger might be one, Walmart might be another, um, Associated Foods is kind of the only other, um, maybe Winco.
Right.
Um, has someone else put a bona fide proposal on the table to build a grocery store if somehow that opportunity ends with the subject property, like with the zone change?
No, we don't have any kind of offer on the table. We have had discussions with those groups that you've talked about, and, um, their response has been that Geneva Center Street piece is a great piece for a grocery store, as long as that's on the table, they're not, um, very interested in going any farther and looking at another piece. Um, but the pieces that Aaron just showed you are one, and then up north of the high school is the other one we're working on. But no, Mr. Strang, we do not have any kind of, uh, written confirmation from any user right now that they're ready to pull the trigger if we get rid of this. This is preemptive based on discussions that we've had.
Uh, economic development folks, Mr. Morey, what, what kind of input does he have on this?
Well, he's, he and Dave, he and Dave Walter are the ones who've been talking to the other groups, and he's been involved in all of these discussions on this.
So he's supportive of the concept of changing the zoning here?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I, I, I need to be clear, if I were to list maybe two or three dreams for Provo City, one would be to get a grocery store west of I-15 without a doubt. Um, the idea of the city doing what is proposed now, eliminating the prospect of having a grocery store at what I think all of the professionals that I've talked to over the years have said is the best site. all of the professionals that I've talked to over the years have said is the best site. I'd add to that, you know, what all of the professionals that I've talked to over the years have said, for various reasons, might be the only site, including the idea that this is the only site that receives traffic potentially from four directions, which you will never get on the Parkway. You'll never get it at that location that you just mentioned, the north. This is the ideal corner in terms of being on the northeast side of the intersection and capturing traffic. So, you know, I'm not trying to hijack the discussion, but this is something that a lot of thought has been put into over the years, I think in terms of identifying the most likely candidate site. And I think I can appreciate the probably frustration that the current property owners are generating relative to their having kind of laid siege to the market maybe out here, but I'm afraid that this action not only doesn't get a grocery store here, but moving forward with this now, doing this quite possibly ensures that there's never a grocery store west of I-15 in Provo. I have a feeling that I'll probably have some other comments, but let's start with Commissioner Jensen.
Deborah? May I just respond to Dave's comments first?
Yeah, please.
We absolutely agree with you that this is the number-one site, the best site. We absolutely agree with that. And we believe that if we could put this on the market to one of those other providers that you mentioned, that we could get a grocery store there pretty quickly. But Smiths-Kroger has made it very clear that they don't want a grocery store here. We've tried to negotiate in ways that we would get possession of their pieces, and then we would work with Cox family to do something else. And it is just very clear that Smiths does not intend to put a grocery store here and that Smiths is hoping that a grocery store never goes here to compete with their other store on Freedom Boulevard. So with that being off the table, the situation we're in right now is kind of Kroger has control of our ability to get a grocery store on the West Side. And that's the dilemma we're trying to deal with. In terms of the appropriateness of this site for a grocery store, I think everybody on staff would agree with what your analysis is.
Well, let me just clarify again. There's not another location west of I-15 in Provo that meets some of the fundamental criteria that I've had people tell me are essential for grocers or, you know, maybe box retailers to have in place in order for them to consider to build. Frankly, the news that Smiths has somehow made it clear that they don't ever intend to build here. Bill, I don't doubt, you know, that maybe they've told you that recently, but, you know, going back just a couple of years, Steve Sorensen, Dave Nielsen, they're Utah guys that I understand are no longer with Smiths, but just 21 months ago, talking with Steve, Smiths viewed this, Kroger did, still as a viable site for the store or for a store, and certainly hadn't written off. And, you know, I took that just at face value as he said it. I think maybe to your point, it's hard to argue with the fact that they've owned it for 20-plus years and haven't done anything. But I guess I'll just leave it at that for now. Commissioner Jensen?
Yeah, I agree that that is the 100% corner for a grocery store, but if it's been sitting in their hands for this long and they have no intention of developing it, then I guess we have to start looking at other potential sites for that. And my thinking when I first saw this and saw that you wanted to downzone it or zone it to medium-density or MDR was that I participated on the West Side planning effort for a bit. I didn't go through the whole process. But one of the big issues with getting a grocery store on the West Side is rooftops. And this neighborhood or collection of neighborhoods has decided they want four units per acre max density across the entire site, right? So right there, you're not going to have big numbers. So my thinking when I saw that they wanted to zone this to medium-density residential is what that does do is permit a fairly dense, it's 25 units per acre, fairly dense number of rooftops to land on the West Side. Or perhaps MDR is not really the ultimate zoning. Maybe ultimately, it's some sort of mixed-use zoning so that you end up with a village, a real village center, a commercial plus residential node. I don't, I agree that that site is prime location for grocery. But if the owner is not willing to develop it and is in fact is opposed to developing it, you know, I think we have to look at the option that's to the south, I-15 at at the Parkway. I know that was talked about as being a commercial node down there. Is it the best location? No. But it is close to residents that are on the southeast side of I-15 that do not have a grocery store right now other than Sam's Club. They really don't have many options over there either. So those are my feelings about it. You can keep it SC2 forever, but if if the owner is never going to develop what you expect to happen under that zoning, then maybe we have to look at other options.
Thank you. Commissioner Urquaga?
All right. This would not normally be a preference of mine, but could staff speak to the potential for eminent domain to be used in that area to move forward?
Of course, cities have that power, but cities are very, very hesitant to use it. There's never been any discussion about proceeding with eminent domain on this piece. And I would be surprised if the city council would want to go there largely because of, you know, you're talking about a very expensive piece of land, the city would have to step up and buy.
Right. And it would not be my first choice at all, but I at least wondered if that had been considered. The center of the property is the Cox property, right?
Yes, the largest piece in the middle is the Cox property.
But there's not a driveway, road, Smiths owns... I guess there is an entrance from the south that you could do something like that if the Cox family were to sell.
The Cox zone shows the curse of those buildings. The Cox own those buildings there, and I'm sure they have access on the north side of those buildings into their property.
Right. Well, so you've got two Smiths parcels on, one on the southeast and one on the southwest corner, but there's a, looks like there's a corridor in between those.
Yeah.
I'm thinking to the south onto Center Street, not over onto Geneva, but it seems to me you could get to... So if the Coxes were willing to sell to a developer, that could be sold out from behind Smiths, and then, I don't know. I'm not sure this is ripe yet, but at the same time, I don't want to prevent anybody from coming in and doing a development because I do know the West Side needs it.
That is a fair idea, Ms. Urquaga. We are aware that the Cox family has a running lease with Smiths for many more years. So they're kind of under contract where that type of situation would have to wait many years.
Okay. Thank you. It just clarifies.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I just, it's my understanding that Smiths wouldn't be motivated to build on that property because it would split their market. And I think that the very fact that that's the perfect location for a grocery store would be the reason why they would never, ever sell it. They would just basically be volunteering the land to their opposition. So I don't know. Like, obviously, this is an ideal because that is the perfect parcel, but I just don't see any way that, things being the way they are, that there would ever be a grocery store built there.
Thank you. Commissioner Lisa Jensen? Lisa, you're on mute.
I said a whole really cool things while that was happening. I'm sure the staff has talked to the legal department about this, but at what point does a rezoning become a taking for Smiths' property or for the Cox family for that matter? I know that you tried to make it so the MDR was a comparable land value, but how do you, how do you know what's legally okay for the city to go and just change the zoning out from underneath somebody?
But it's not a taking unless you're denying pretty much all economic value. So even zoning a single-family wouldn't be a taking, but that would be such a diminution of value that we certainly wouldn't, certainly wouldn't be friendly towards the property owners. I believe that the MDR zone actually has a higher per-acre value in today's market than the SC2 zone does.
But even though the intended...
You'd have to take all economic value for it to be a taking.
Okay, so even though you know that the owners of the property would never intend to use it for residential, that still couldn't be, that couldn't come back to bite you?
No.
My other question, I think Deborah Jensen maybe said the same, hinted at the same thing, but as I read through this report, I wondered if a mixed-use residential zone would be a better recommendation simply because it is pretty much the only commercial node along Center Street with good access to the freeway, and there's already some commercial uses on the corners. And so maybe having a mixed-use zone there instead of an MDR zone there might be a better, might better accomplish the goals of blending in with the neighborhood, but also blending in with the commercial uses on the corners.
I think that is an appealing concept. We don't have a mixed-use zone written right now, but one is being worked on. But I think the idea is sound.
That's all, Dave. I just wanted to ask those questions because I'm not really sure that MDR is the best option.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yeah, I have a question with, you know, there's been talk about downgrading the zoning on this forever, leaving the West Side without a grocery store, but what about other sites on Lake Shore Drive? Are there any prospects or has there been any inquiries of developers or other grocery store entities seeking to develop along Lake Shore Drive? Mostly on the north, the part of Lake Shore Drive that goes north to south, like around Lake Shore and Center Street.
So the other commercial node we're looking at, this is Lakeview Drive connecting to the north. It's not there now. It'll be built the next few years. This is 2000 North. We're working on a 17-acre parcel here for a commercial node. This is not ripe for a grocery store right now by any means, but based on the growth that we expect to have happen in Provo and Orem and in Vineyard, we think that's a potentially very good location. So that's one of the other ones we're working on. One of the south is are these pieces. And just yeah, they're right at, there's 500 West, there's Lakeview, and there's the I-15. And just so you, just a heads up to the Planning Commission, we're going to be coming forward with commercial rezonings on this in the near future.
I can't see what you're pointing at, Mr. Pepper.
I'm sorry, I was using my laser. Where Aaron is now using the cursor, we're going to be coming forward with rezonings on those in the near future.
And what was the parcel you showed on the north? I didn't see that one either.
Sorry. So on the north, it's right there. That strip on the west is the future Lakeview Parkway. To the north, just to remind, arrows moving. To the north is 2000 North in Provo, 2000 South in Orem. And based on growth projections for that area, we think that's viable in a few years. It's not ripe today by any means. During a few years, we think it may very well be.
So that's significantly north from the high school? Is that where I'm seeing on the map?
Yes, the north is right there, I'm just pointing.
Okay. Commissioner Henry?
I feel like this is development chess we're playing here tonight. Because it seems to me that Smiths, even if we change the zone, Smiths isn't going to develop it as a residential, and they're not going to sell it because then somebody else buys it, changes it, and puts in a grocery store. So it seems to me like Smiths is stuck with the property if they're not going to develop it. And so by making this zone change, we're giving the opportunity for someone else to actually make a move and put in a grocery store. It just seems to me that Smiths has kind of backed into a corner on it, that they're not going to develop it no matter what we do with apartments or a mixed-use or a medium-density to protect their other stores in the city. I guess that's more just a comment, thinking out loud, but but changing this zone does open up the opportunity for somebody to potentially put a grocery store somewhere else, even though it's not maybe the most viable location. Man, this is a tough one tonight.
Dave?
Sorry, Aaron, please.
We met with the Cox family earlier this week and kind of went over this idea and kind of strategies and the reasons behind it with them. When we expressed the desire for MDR and what that could bring to the property, they wanted some time to think on that because it might pique their interest into some type of residential product that they could build on their piece of the land. So they would actually prefer if the Planning Commission continued this tonight after the public comment so they could have time to kind of meet as a family and discuss their options with that.
Thank you. Back to Commissioner Lisa Jensen.
I just wanted to clarify. So there is no other mixed-use zone besides the campus mixed-use zone, is that correct?
Well, the SC3 has a bit of it. You can do 20% residential on a SC3 zone, but for right now, that's all we have. We are formulating some other residential mixed-use zones in the Long Range Planning Group.
Thank you.
Well, this is a public hearing before we go there. You know, I think my discouragement is probably coming through a little bit, maybe more than I'd like it to. But again, just relative to fundamentals that people that invest lots and lots of money into grocery stores look at, they will only locate They will only locate on corners where traffic can access them from four directions. Um, I think that's part of the reason that in other parts of Provo, we haven't seen grocery stores build, you know, even though the rooftops are there. Um, we don't see people making the investment in the community because the fundamental criteria that um, their corporations demand can't be met. And this site, as I see it, at least with what we're talking about now, will forever be the only one that potentially can meet that criteria. Other things that I have directly heard retailers tell me about are as to why they skip Provo and make investments in neighboring communities. It's not necessarily having too few of rooftops, but it's the type of homes that we have and the fact that our median income is well below half of what uh, they enjoy when they locate in neighboring communities. Their hesitance to make investments in communities where perhaps their average ticket, their average receipt is in the $20 to $25 range instead of north of $100 like they have in communities with bigger families, growing families, different things like that. Um, it's a really big deal for them. Traffic counts. Obviously, that's a big deal. Um, if the things that are envisioned in the West Side plan come to fruition, uh, this intersection, I think, will always be at least among the highest, if not the highest in terms of traffic volume. Another big deal, visibility, great here. And all of the things that you need to make something work exist here. Um, obviously, property owner, that's an issue. I tend to believe that over time, the market takes care of that in spite of the decades of experience that we have with this. I would maybe feel differently, just relative to being discouraged about the proposal. If there was another site that, uh, that had more similar characteristics to this one. But um, this, uh, this really creates a lot of challenges for me, just in terms of, uh, I think really a fairly abrupt way that it's come before us without, um, frankly, the type of research that I would expect to see happen before something as significant as this was proposed. I'd also note that with, uh, at least the idea being considered that we review the general plan for the city, uh, citywide update, as I understand it, that this would come to us now, perhaps before we go through an exercise like that. But uh, I, I will say this, that my opinion could change certainly if there was somebody, another bona fide party that was uh, ready to commit in, in a real way to a different site west of I-15. But uh, I, I frankly could go on and on and on, but uh, I think you get where I'm coming from. And with that being said, we will go ahead and open up the public hearing. We'll start with anyone representing the neighborhood. I don't know who that might be from the numbers, so maybe just to skip through that. Uh, whoever's phone number ends in nine, two, four, we start with you. If you'd please state your name. And if there's a better.
I don't have time to hold. Can you hear me now?
Yes, would you please state your name?
This is Rick Cox, representing the Cox family. And I am very disappointed in what happened from the staff. Because yesterday we met with them and they committed it to us that they would request from staff a continuance of this discussion so that we would have time to communicate with Smiths and strategize on how we can get the grocery store at this location. I'm also disappointed that your staff spoke on our behalf and without us being able to speak for ourselves until now, we could have saved you a lot of time. So I am requesting a continuance of this discussion until your next planning commission meeting so that I, we have an opportunity to meet with Smiths and discuss it with them.
Mr. Cox, thank you. Let me, I'm gonna just interrupt, but before, uh, maybe you end sharing any comments that you have. As staff made it clear to me that they, they are suggesting that this be continued tonight. So please understand that, that that indeed is what's been communicated from them to me.
Well, was it communicated to the rest of the planning commission?
We certainly would get there. I, I, I appreciate the concern, but again, I think staff is following through on what they committed to you.
Okay, I'm going to tell you some more information that they have felt to share with you. The lease with the Smiths is for another eight and a half years. I'm committed to a grocery store at this location. I would like to see a grocery store here. But I can't, I can't commit to that because in nine years, Smiths could renew their lease.
That's, I think, helpful information to know. So you're saying that, uh, Smiths has eight years remaining on their lease. Do they have some type of automatic renewal clause, first writ of refusal or something like that that could extend their involvement with the property beyond eight years?
That, that's correct. That's why we want the opportunity to speak to Smiths and negotiate with them, see what we can do to make it happen sooner. Now, I, I'm disappointed that that wasn't expressed or that, that the continuance issue was not addressed at the beginning of this discussion.
Okay, fair enough. Any other, uh, maybe points of fact that you want to share with us tonight?
I think that's all I need to say. I would really request a continuance.
Okay, that's been clear and, you know, I don't mean to be redundant, but again, on behalf of staff, I, I truly believe that that is their intent, so.
Well, let me, let me just share with you that I, we went into our meeting with them yesterday very angry because we felt like we'd been treated poorly by your staff and how we were communicated. They did the same thing. They said, oh yeah, your point is well taken, sorry. And then they explained to us the situation and we felt much better about leaving it. But then when we get to this meeting, it just brought up all those same feelings of frustration that we had prior, that we were being ignored. So your staff needs to not ignore us when we make these requests. And, and an apology is great. I appreciate it, but it just keeps happening.
Once again, thank you, Mr. Cox. Any other comments? We will move on to whoever's number ends in seven, zero, seven.
Hi, um, this is Mary Ann Cox Perkins. I'm Rick Cox's sister. I'm an equal owner in that lot. We both agree we would prefer to have a grocery store there. Um, we would like a chance to, I, I, I'm just reconfirming, we would like a chance to negotiate if there's a way that we could get control of the property that Smiths has. They're giving us a crazy amount of money right now to lease it from us. And if we could release them from that, uh, and negotiate, you know, purchasing that land from them, then we would be free to, to do it, but. But we just need some time. We just would, at least like a month that we could sit down with Smiths. If not, um, anyway, we hope you'll give that to us. And then the other thing that I'm concerned about is this mixed use. I personally have had some bad luck with the mixed use. Sometimes it's hard to keep that rented and then you have these empty, um, commercial buildings underneath and it makes it so um, the renters on top are uncomfortable being in this ghost town of a place. And um, I would prefer, especially if we can't get the property from the, from Smiths and we have that smaller section, it would be easier to put. Yeah, because we won't have control of Smiths most likely unless we can get control of it. Um, it would be easier to put in apartments than trying to make it a commercial area with just our spot, just our lot. So that, that was one thing I heard that I was a little bit concerned about was the mixed use if we don't get the property from Smiths. But I would like a chance to negotiate with Smiths and take, um, be able to purchase that. Did anybody hear that?
I think we all heard that. Thank you. Anything else?
No, no. I appreciate the chance to talk to you.
Well, it may not be the last time, so, so thank you for joining us tonight. Um. We will go ahead and move on to whoever's number ends in six, five, one.
Hello, am I unmuted now?
Yes, if you'd please state your name.
Yes, I'm Jonathan Hill. I'm the Fort Utah Neighborhood Chair, the Neighborhood Chair over this area.
Thank you.
We did hold a, um, neighborhood meeting on this over Zoom. Bill presented to the neighborhood. Um, we kind of did a straw poll, you know, an unofficial vote on it as well. So I kind of wanted to report those things now. What I'm going to say, I, I honestly don't think is going to be much new. Most of you, most of these things you guys hit already, but I do want you to know that what you've been talking about reflects what people in the neighborhood are feeling. So, um, the vote was fairly split. Um, I don't have the exact numbers with me, but based on ability to vote on Zoom anyway, I don't think they're super accurate. But the general idea is there and that was that it was roughly even thirds between supporting the rezone, opposed to the rezone, and we need more information before we make a decision kind of feeling. Pretty much everyone in that meeting and afterwards, when I solicited email comments, indicated like you guys did, that a grocery store on the West Side would be very, very much appreciated. Those who voted in favor seem to indicate that, you know, if this is what it takes to get one on the West Side, let's do it, whatever it takes, kind of thing. Um, those who were opposed, um, were mostly concerned about, gosh, this is a great piece of commercial property. Again, as you guys have commented, um, they would be sad to lose that opportunity, um, and to, to lose that great freeway access and kind of commercial node right there. Um, and also some of them had kind of, uh, opposition based on traffic concerns, but I think Bill um, addressed that very well tonight, that traffic actually would be better with MDR than with commercial. And those who wanted more information reflected what you guys said is let's wait until we have someone, you know, with a deal on the table um, that's ready to go, uh, some more information. Are these other places going to fly? Are they viable? Those kinds of things before we sacrifice this commercial property for another location. Now, uh, as a former member of the West Side Planning Committee, um, I did serve on that committee the whole time and was part of these discussions. Deborah was right in saying we, we kind of wanted four units per acre throughout the area. That was both a neighborhood desire and, um, a public works uh, request due to limitations in infrastructure on the West Side. You, you can think about road access across Provo because of I-15 cutting through. You can think about, you know, having to pump our sewage uphill to the treatment plant, um, and other things like that that really do limit our ability to, uh, develop at higher densities. Now, we, we understand and we appreciate the need for various housing types. And so we created these kind of nodes that Bill pointed out, and this was one of them where higher density might work because you've got good road infrastructure, good connectivity with the freeway and with, uh, the rest of Provo. Uh, you also have, uh, sewage connections that are more available. There's actually a fairly main trunk line that runs down just east of this property. And so, you know, it would be a great place to have higher density area. Now, one thing we've talked about in the past was more of a mixed use. If we brought back up that plan, uh, that we put together uh, for the Southwest, you'll see that it does mention mixed use there and then MDR was actually to the east of it a little bit. One idea we had talked about is maybe flipping those so that Smiths kind of get their hand forced a little bit, but we still could have a commercial development in that area, um, as the trailer park and those, those homes to the east may get redeveloped in the future. I did talk to one developer at one point just to say, hey, what would a developer think of this? And they said that if the city put, um, I can't remember what they're called, maybe Bill can help me, but it's a redevelopment zone where they can recoup some of the tax revenue from the increased property values on the area. They think a developer would jump in, um, and want to develop the entire site as a larger mixed use with residential. And then, um, he said you could get a developer to guarantee a grocery store as part of that development. That was a condition of the redevelopment zone. So anyway, those are some thoughts from the neighborhood and from me personally for you guys.
Thank you. I don't see anyone else from the public that wants to speak. Do we want to give people another moment maybe to hop on?
Give him 30 seconds.
Okay. I'll let you tell us when time's up.
While you're waiting for that time, could I just ask the planning commission members by a raise of hands? How many of you heard Aaron Ardmore ask you for a continuance of this item at the request of the Cox family?
I think that's unanimous. Just to be clear, I'm looking at comments people have provided in the chat, so. I think staff was very clear about that.
No additional comments.
Okay, thank you. Uh, that being the case, we will go ahead and close the public hearing and, um, turn the discussion back to the commission. Any other thoughts or comments on the proposal? And I say that with the idea that it sounds like we're gonna uh, probably continue this tonight. Sorry, I need to maybe jump back. Uh, Commissioner Gonzalez.
Uh, yeah, I was just gonna speak. I, I definitely heard, uh, Mr. Ardmore, uh, bring up the, uh, that the Coxes wanted a continuance. And I've also worked with him on other projects. And I've, I found him to be very considerate and willing to listen to, uh, different applicants I've been representing.
I think that's helpful to reiterate. Um, again, I think, uh, the intent on the part of staff was to, to suggest that this be continued. I'm afraid that I should have brought that up earlier and maybe would have saved Mr. Cox some frustration. Commissioner Lisa Jensen.
Um, along those same lines, I think it's valuable that we had this discussion and perhaps that's why it wasn't continued and left off of the agenda. Because it helps to raise an awareness and helps us to focus um, the economic development goals with the community development, general plan goals. So I, if, I don't think it was an error for us to, to be introduced to the idea tonight. With even the intent that it wouldn't be made, we wouldn't make a decision on it, that we would continue it. I think that the discussion has brought forth a lot of, um, things that have corresponded with the, what our, the neighborhood chair said with, you know, some people in favor, some people against, some people wanting more information. And I think we sort of all feel a mix of that as well, that we, we feel like we know what a good solution is. We're not sure we know how to get it. But we, I believe we're all on the same page as far as a goal for, for Provo and we just have to, to spend more time discussing to help us come up with a solution that will be best for this area.
Thank you, Commissioner Urquiaaga. Thank you, Commissioner Urquiaaga.
Yes, I would, um. Agree with everything that Commissioner Jensen has said, and I. I'm hesitant to rezone if we don't have another party that has. Um. A commitment to develop in another place. But if we were to have something like that a year. Um, I would not hesitate to rezone. Under those kinds of circumstances, and I think it's helpful for the Coxes and also for Smiths to know. That, um, this is a possibility, that, um. Provo City is not going to allow them to lock a grocery store out of the west side. Um, and so. I think that is a very important point to make at this point, but I do. Feel a lot more comfortable with the idea of continuing at this point until. There's more. Solid information as to what else could be done, or what the Cox family can come back and offer.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Henry?
I'd like to make a motion on this one.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you to hold that, Mr. Henry, for a second, I just have a couple of thoughts to throw out before. Um, we go there. We've talked a little bit about, um, what I think is maybe value. Um, I appreciated Commissioner Lisa Jensen bringing up the notion of. The downzoning, maybe having, you know, some type of a taking impact, and. I, I think, uh, Mr. Pepperoni is right in the way that he addressed that. But, um. Just in terms of what incentive this conceivably would provide for the property owner to indeed change the use of the property. And, and that apparently is the intent. Um. Bill. Medium density residential would allow for how many units to the acre?
Up to thirty.
So I don't think I'm going way out on a limb. When I say that, you know, thirty units to the acre. Is going to be worth more in the marketplace today. Than what retailers are paying for big sites. For grocery stores. Uh, I say that with the understanding that oftentimes. Commercial real estate developers. Sell land to. The box anchor at cost. They don't make money. On that sale. Land value for that is not real high. They make their money by selling the pads that are associated with those developments. And when you average out that per square foot value that they have in the property. I think oftentimes people find that it's, it's lower than what they expect. Uh, maybe it to be. For that type of development, I understand that oftentimes, you know, people look at. At that maybe commercial zoning or something like that. As having tremendous value, but particularly in today's marketplace. Um. Residential development at the density that we're talking about. Which is very uncommon to find in Utah County. That's very desirable, people pay a lot of money for that. Um, so I think it's, it's reasonable to think that as the Coxes study this further. You know, they'll certainly find some financial incentive. With this proposal to abandon. The idea that a grocery store will be located there. And I, I could be proved wrong certainly by that, but. Uh, I just wanted to offer that thought. Um, I appreciate the idea of this being continued. I, and maybe I'll offer a little different, different thought as to the process, um. Uh, seeing this for the first time last week, having this scheduled for a public hearing. Uh, something this significant. Frankly, is, um. A way of going about the business of. Changing. Significant. Aspects of. A community's growth and development. Um, that is really hard for me to get my head around. Versus maybe having that this introduced. Uh, as some type of a study item, a concept or something like that. And spending potentially weeks or months. Working with planning commissioners and property owners and so forth. Uh, to vet the concept before it's on an agenda for a public hearing, so. Just a couple of, uh, thoughts that I have. And, uh, I apologize for interrupting a second ago. Commissioner Henry, but if you're willing to, to make a motion now, we'll certainly entertain that.
Just a minute before the motion. We told the Cox family that, uh, that wouldn't be back before the planning commission for at least thirty days. So they would have thirty days to reach out to Smiths. So that would mean the October twenty eighth meeting or after that.
Okay, sounds great. So I make a motion that we, uh, continue, item five, Development Services Department requests a zone change from Neighborhood Shopping Center SC two. To medium density residential for approximately eleven acres. Located at nineteen twenty West Center Street. And to continue that till the October twenty eighth meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Henry, we have a motion, do we have a second?
All second.
I think that was Commissioner Gonzalez, right?
That's right.
Okay, thank you, we have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
I do have one comment, um, really quickly, um, that. If, um, I, I'd like it to be no earlier than October twenty fourth. Um, or twenty eighth. But it could be later. I don't think we should give it a specific date.
Okay, I think that is the intent, at least of the motion as I understood it, but I appreciate that, that clarification. Um. Any other thoughts or comments about that or the motion? Okay. Thank you, so we'll go back to, uh, well, in fact, uh, we will do a roll call, Commissioner Deborah Jensen.
Aye.
Commissioner Urquiaaga?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lisa Jensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Henry?
Aye.
Commissioner Knutson?
Aye.
And, uh, aye for me. So I think that takes care of everything that we have on our agenda for tonight, that motion carries. Staff, is there anything else that you want to touch on this evening?
Yes, uh, if it's all right with you, based on discussion you had at the beginning of the meeting. We'd like to start our next. Planning Commission meeting at five o'clock in the afternoon. We'd start and have fifteen minutes or so for planning commissioners to introduce themselves and get to know the new ones. And then we'd start into our business agenda after that, is that acceptable to the planning commission members?
Yes.
Yes. Dave, you're not sure.
I don't hear anybody objecting, I think that's a great idea, um, still, that would happen remotely using Zoom, I assume?
Yes.
Okay. Now I think that's a great thought, um. Let me ask this, is there any discussion going on in Provo about a timeframe for. Somehow, again, having in-person meetings?
We haven't heard of one, we're gonna follow the lead of the city council because we feel like it would be confusing for the public if city council was doing. Something different than planning commission. So we've been intending to just kind of follow their lead, and we haven't heard any discussion from them on in-person meetings yet.
That document that you read at the beginning, Dave, it said that since we're still in the yellow phase or something, so I would imagine that. Nothing will change till it's in green.
Yeah, that's a good point. Well, um. Anything else before we? Ask for a motion to adjourn? I don't hear anything, if somebody wants to take the plunge.
Motion to adjourn.
I think that was Commissioner Deborah Jensen by a hair, uh, second.
All second.
Uh, that was the other Commissioner Jensen, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, that was everybody, I heard everybody, so that motion unanimous, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. You, bye.